Welcome, everybody, to the July 8th, 2025 Swampscott Select Board meeting. If you all join me in...
Pledge of Allegiance?
The meeting is recorded.
And the meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Diane. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I thought we'd just take a moment of silence for what's happened in Texas. Just incredible, incredible tragedy there. Thank you. Climate is coming against us. Okay. So, first item here. Mr. Intern Town Administrator?
We're gonna go before public comments?
Yep, tonight.
As we say, yep, saw that. All right. Welcome, everybody. I'm pleased to offer the following report on programs and initiatives that are ongoing in the town of Swampscott. Community development. See Marzi in here?
Marzi's online.
Online. Brief update on Pine Street. Ben Avrith has requested additional time to submit their schematics for the building. They are now due on July 30th. The planning board has shared their comments. The planning board comments will be forwarded to the Select Board before its July 22nd meeting. Additionally, Marzi is working on scheduling a meeting with the Veterans Leadership. How the hotel. Clearview is currently reviewing the town's restructured pilot payment structure. Public library. New trustee-approved policies and procedures have been downloaded to the library website. Over 250 patrons attended the summer reading kickoff party. And the library had 996 visitors last week, despite being closed on Friday. Truly remarkable. Building department. The building department landing page has been updated with department personnel and contact information, as well as a link to FAQs. Rich Baldacci, our building commissioner, recently met with department heads regarding ADUs, and then will be issuing an FAQ on ADUs soon. The building department issued 156 permits so far in June, totaling 42,075. Senior Center. Governor Healy increased the formula grant from $15 to $16 per resident over 60. This will result in a projected revenue of $69,120. This money will be used to cover part-time administrative assistance, transportation costs, software, and conferences. Recent state airbags approved for a new refrigerator and freezer. Unfortunately, they won't be released by the administration until the fall. The senior center will be closed next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday, July 16th, as seniors will be enjoying a ferry trip to Boston. All are welcome, and I believe there's still room on the boat. Recreation. The summer concert series kicks off tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Enjoy a free concert on Town Hall lawn featuring Studio Two, a Beatles tribute band. TJ's Test Truck, a lot of Ts, and Uncle Joey's cannoli will be on site for food and dessert options. The annual Bentwater Day on the Beach is this Saturday, July 12th, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, featuring live music, food from the Yard Club and beer and hard seltzer from the Bentwater Brewing Company. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at the door or online. Proceeds benefit the annual fireworks celebration. This week's movie will be held this Thursday. July 10th, 6:30 PM, will feature Moana and will be shown on Fisherman's Beach. Chick Chick and Isabella's Ice Cream will be on site as food options. New-to-town Sam Walker's Tavern is our premier sponsor for this year's movie series. Clerk's office. Clerk's office procured a new public record system which will assist in FOIA requests. Cable TV, George Joe, somewhere. A new contract with Comcast is currently being discussed. Joe Dulett is working on a plan to restructure the department, both in definition of services as well as fiscal strategy. Finally, the final stage of the auditorium upgrade is scheduled for the first week of August. Speakers and acoustic paneling will be installed. Police. Police two-piece grant training was conducted last week. Community surveys were conducted by a third party as part of the grant. The chief will share the results when he receives them. The chief is conducting final evaluations this week for lateral officers. There are four new lateral officers on the hiring list to be interviewed. The next physical training exams are scheduled for July 23rd and August 10th, and there are 40 new candidates on the list. Where is my first page? Work with me for a minute. And finally, we're gonna talk about my favorite subject. Here it is. Trash. Trash has consumed a lot of my time in the last week and a half. But I'd like to give everybody an update. It's a real fluid situation. I've had numerous meetings with both Republic and a group of town managers, town administrators, and mayors from all the other communities to be affected by this strike. So the news we got today is, unfortunately, they still haven't completed Monday's route, which is a shame, because Monday's route was actually finished last week, so that was only one week's worth of trash, and it's taken them two-plus days to finish that. Tomorrow, they're gonna start on Tuesday's route, which will be two weeks' worth of trash. Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. I don't have a lot of confidence that they're gonna finish this week. So we made a decision today to forego recycling. So we're asking all the residents to bring the recycling back in this week with the hope that we'll be back on track next week. However, as a concession to that, this week, similar to what we did last week, we're gonna have six dumpsters at the DPW ER this week. Last week, we had three 40-yard dumpsters. We filled two and a half of them with residents bringing in trash. This week, the other, next street dumpsters is gonna be recycling dumpsters. So if people wanna bring in, residents wanna bring in their recycling, bring it down to DPW ER, and we'll put in a recycling dumpster. I wish I had better news for you. Unfortunately, as I said, it's a fluid situation. We've been working with Republic. They'd like to tell you this strike's gonna be resolved soon. I don't get a warm and fuzzy feeling about that, you know, just talking to them. You're drawing a hard line. So that's it. If anybody has any questions regarding the trash, feel free to reach out to DPW or Health Department. We'll do the best we can to answer the questions.
Thank you, Gino. Danielle, any questions?
I don't have questions. I do have a comment. I just wanna thank Wayne Spritz who's here tonight and Gino Cresta and the guys at the DPW. It's an awful situation, and there's no easy way out of it. It is totally out of our control, but I do appreciate Wayne taking the lead and really initiating some calls this week to get everybody involved and to kind of brainstorm and see what we could do. And Gino getting, securing some dumpsters so we could at least open the DPW ER to residents who have trash that is just, they don't know what to do with it. So I wish our response or our advanced response to this was a little bit better, right? So I wish, I have the feeling that maybe the Health Department knew a little bit about this coming up, and we could have been a little bit more well-timed, you know, with our communication and our plan, but we did spring into action, and I thank you for that, because that really...
You're welcome.
It was, I know it was a lot, it's been, it's a terrible time of year for this to happen, and it was very time-consuming, but I do appreciate it. I went and dropped trash myself, and it was pretty seamlessly easy, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just add that the residents of Swampscott have been so appreciative of this effort down there. They're thanking us instead of complaining. Thank you, guys, very much. We really appreciate it, bringing the guys, myself, drinks. It's been nice to know, it's brilliant.
Worked out well for you.
It has. Got a nice tan Saturday and Sunday hanging out down at the DPW ER. It's like being in the desert.
David? Nothing. Mary Ellen?
I have a couple of questions, only because we all received an email, so I just wanna get the answers to these questions from Wayne Spritz. So I just wanna, is it, can we get, can we do a drop-off in the middle of the week?
I think that's gonna be very difficult, because we have trucks coming in out of the yard. We have our workers parked there. It's still used as a fueling station.
What about after work?
Potentially. I'd have to get guys to work, because we're not having residents even get out of their cars. It's just coming in, instead of throwing a trash bag over a 40-yard dumpster, which is eight feet high.
Yeah.
We're throwing it into a front-end loader.
Right.
So if that's what the board desires, I'm sure my guys will jump all over the overtime.
Maybe Friday?
Maybe Friday.
You know?
Give them a little advance.
Something, yeah. If the guys are up for it, you know, we should be able to get reimbursed at the end of this crisis.
Oh, I plan on it.
Even if you hire, hire maybe some part-time labor, some of the college kids home might wanna...
Yeah, I think my guys will, they're first in line, be in the union.
Of course.
They'll jump all over it. They're not gonna turn that down.
All right, good. And then, so I received about seven phone calls today, when I had my phone. I put my phone away, that's all, about people asking, trying to tell me that their trash wasn't picked up. Who do we want people to call? We need to, we need to get that pretty clear.
They're probably better off calling.
But I told them, call Doug, but...
Yeah. I think the DPW office, you know, Jeff's short-staffed in his office, and to his credit, he's been out on the routes all day long yesterday and today, checking, see what's being missed, so...
Okay. So what happened to us? Wasn't, at one point, weren't we going to call Republic? Wasn't, were we gonna be able to log in to our accounts? Do we have discussion about that at one of the emergency meetings?
There is, there is an account they need to sign up for.
Yes.
And you can report that this is a call online. Now, whether or not that's gonna do good, I don't, I don't know. I did call, this is a test, I called customer service number.
Right. So what I was told during today's meeting, that they're not gonna chase the one or two houses that were missed. If we know that there's a streets missed, they'll circle back and pick up the street, but if one or two houses, the new drivers aren't familiar with the routes, so they're struggling with it.
So one of the, one of the issues that I have is, is the elderly and disabled. We have about 70 to 100 residents in town that are, they stay inside, they're housebound. And so I did talk to Heidi over at the Senior Center, and she's going to talk with her staff about, you know, how do we deal with this? I mean, they have people come in and they're helping them, but what's gonna happen is their trash is gonna be put on the curb, and then, you know, how are we gonna get that? So Heidi's just doing a little bit of work on getting a recommendation, and we can just figure it out with volunteers, like...
That's sort of the ideal, if we could get volunteers with a pickup truck.
Yeah, we could get volunteers. I mean, I volunteered on Saturday. I will not be taking a career in trash removal. It was pretty hard. And then, last but not least, the one thing that we've really noticed and is the very small amount of people that are on the Code Red and On Solve. And at the farmer's market on Saturday, 70% of the people that came to my booth didn't even live in Swampscott. It was really interesting. But 30% who did live in Swampscott, I asked every single person, "Do you know about the trash strike?" Everyone knew about the trash strike. The majority of the people learned about it through Facebook, the nest, and there was a small amount that received the, a text message from the town or a robocall, and several people said they couldn't hear the robocall. They couldn't understand it, it's too electronic.
I agree, and that's why we made an effort today to send out the robocall with somebody's voice from Town Hall.
So, but I think we, as a board, have to really figure out how we're gonna get more people signed up, sign up on that, so...
It's my understanding we might have 1,100 out of the 5,400 homes in Swampscott signed up, so what's that, 20%? Quick math?
Yeah, I think we just make a, make a plan and figure it out. So Wayne, I highlighted the top, the top things in here, if that's okay with you?
Yeah. There was, I have a question whether or not you figured out, I have a question whether or not you figured out why they're starting so late?
They are starting so late because the picketers, the gentlemen or ladies, they're striking and blocking the gate and not allowing them out of the yard.
Okay, and, and we had discussed whether or not we could house the trucks locally? Is that possible?
I presented them that option, and they said no. Number one, they were worried about security. Number two, they said their mechanic has to check the trucks on a daily basis.
At least we asked.
Yep, definitely asked.
All right. Okay. The last thing I was gonna say was just that Tuesday today was, you know, we're now like at one week out. So Tuesdays and Wednesdays residents are gonna be the most backed up, and there's a lot of us, myself included, that didn't participate last Saturday, because, hey, I thought I could last another couple of days. I think there's gonna be pressure on particularly the Tuesday and Wednesday routes. If we're not, if we're really backed up, I kind of second the, the recommendation of having maybe a Thursday drop-off, if we can just keep that in mind, seeing how we do.
Yep. I'll do whatever the board desires.
Yeah, I would like to skip Thursday. I just have one question on police. Can you send the board a, can you ask the chief to send the board this week a real detail on what, what the timeline looks for, looks, looks like for hiring? Thank you.
When you're ready, Gino, I have one question, too.
I'm ready.
So at the Senior Center, this extra buck that we're getting, and 69,000 bucks, and we all know how tight the budget is, is that money required to go to these expenses that are enumerated here, or is that the decision that you and Heidi have come to? Or is this, you know, money that can be spent in various ways?
To be honest, I don't know. I'll have to check with Heidi to get that answered.
Okay. I mean, this may be the, you know, perfectly right thing to do, but...
Yep.
There's usually a line item for the grant.
We were scraping for $70,000, so... I'm sorry, Mary Ellen?
There's usually a grant line item that, that works into their budget.
Yep. Okay. If nothing else, for the interim town administrator, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Welcome, sir. Say your name and address, please.
Thomas Arrington, 40 Roy Street. I'm a CIT at our Park League program. Currently, there is no bike racket, Clark. This is problematic, because many of our campers ride to Park League. You have nowhere to lock, lock up their bikes. Some are leaving them against the fence, but others are just leaving them straight on the ground. Returning, the bike rack would make it a safer and more organized morning. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Where did he say that was?
Abbott Park, Clark School.
Thank you, Thomas.
I believe that's all the Park Leagues are being held now.
It is.
Any other public comment? Doesn't look like there's any online either. Okay. We will move along. First item up is discussion impossible vote on fiscal year-end transfers. Gino, is Trey gonna take us through this?
You wanna work together?
Okay.
Okay. We teamed up last night, so I think we can do it again today. Are we gonna pull this up, or are there any specific questions?
Should probably pull it up.
So, as you can see, the bottom line is funds needed totaled 662,676.83 cents. So we're able to credit to Amy before she left. She had put this together for us, so we found funding sources to cover the 660-plus thousand dollars.
And then we were given this document that has prior years. Is this just for reference? Do you have any idea?
Trey, can you help me with that one?
Is this just for reference, what the prior-year transfers were?
I don't have that page.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So you all get it?
So any questions from the board on this?
I just have one question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Just on, I watched the Finance Committee meeting last night. I, I didn't get all of it, but I did catch part of what you were saying about sick time, taking sick time off, and then retiring.
Yes.
And then how that, how that affects the overtime.
Yes.
So I didn't catch it, I was just wondering if you could.
Yep, I'll elaborate on that. So what we found is funds needed, when you look down, the fire personnel is over $230,000. Part of that pertained to a firefighter that was out on disability that we were paying all year, I shouldn't say working, not disability, until they finally retired him. So while he was out, not only was he getting paid, but it was also we were paying overtime to backfill that position. And the second part of it is, we learned of a practice that I'm now told that will be discontinued, of paying firefighters out their sick time once they decide to retire. So in other words, if somebody had 56 days to go, they're saying, "I'm done today, but I'm not effectively retiring for another 50 workdays." And I know, I gave the same look. But, and I know it's the worst phrase that I can't stand in this hand, and they'll never use it at the DPW ER, but it is, that's the way it always has been, but I was told, I, you know how I feel about that term, that that practice will be discontinued and will no longer be put into effect, because clearly it's...
Let me, let me understand this, though. So somebody gives a retirement date.
Yep.
Of X. They figure out they have 56 days. So they, 50 days in advance of the date they already had certified with HR or whoever. They say, "This is my last day, I'm calling in sick for 50 days."
I'm not so sure they're telling HR that. They may...
Or whoever, who are, who are they, they have to tell somebody, right?
Hartman Head, possibly.
Wouldn't they be saying that to the chief?
Definitely, yeah.
So they say to the chief, "I'm, I'm gonna be sick for the next 51 days."
I'm gonna use sick time like everybody else has done previously.
And nobody's, nobody does anything about it?
Just did.
But prior to this?
Apparently not.
So this is something that's happened repeatedly?
That's what I found out.
Well, good for putting a stop to it, Gino.
That's the good news.
Okay.
So do you wanna comment on maybe a couple other of the big funds-needed categories? If that's the explanation, generally for the fire personnel, there's also property and casualty and legal, I suppose, the next two big ones?
Yep. Trey, property and casualty?
Is that the insurance from the new school?
That's correct.
New school, yep.
And the Hawthorne.
Hawthorne.
Yep.
And Hadley?
Why weren't those...
Small push.
Hadley's small, you know?
Why weren't those known?
What's that?
They were known, they weren't factored into the budget.
Amy had told us about that.
They were known, they were not factored into the budget in 2025.
So, so is the entirety of the 153-some-odd-thousand dollars solely new school and Hawthorne?
Majority of the 153, the new school and the Hawthorne?
Hawthorne and the elementary school.
The elementary school? Just seems like a lot.
Amy had mentioned this, though. She had brought this up.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't budget it for fiscal 2025, and then it didn't hit until later.
Do we have it factored into 26 appropriately?
Yes.
Okay.
The legal expenses are through what date? Is that through June 15th, or have we projected that out through the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, from June 30th. So it's covered everything we need for this fiscal year.
Okay.
So that means that our legal expense was roughly 100,000 over what we had budgeted? Is that what that is?
That's right.
And this is all with our town council? We have a regular deal, but somehow we went over the fixed amount?
With him, yeah, and then some of it was attributed to the HAB, some of it was attributed to Pine Street, and some of it may have been attributed to personnel. Yeah, we talked about the UU last night, right?
We had the UU in August. We had to, we had to finish paying out, we had to finish paying out the outside council. We had, we had a very expensive outside council for the UU that had to settle that out.
So in some ways, some of this is investment, in terms of the projects that we have underway.
Right.
Any other questions?
I just, I just have a comment. And I just, tonight I want to address an extremely concerning matter, which has brought to my attention. You know, the town of Swampscott routinely engages with town council, KP Law. From time to time, the town is gonna need to engage outside council whenever this occurs. There's a vote of the Select Board to do so. However, on a most recent occasion, this did not happen. In February of '25, the Select Board, through Select Board member, Select Board member Mary Ellen Fletcher hired an outside law firm, Murphy, Hess, Tumi, and Lehane, to provide a second legal opinion regarding the Pine Street project without the vote or knowledge of the Select Board and without the approval or knowledge of acting town administrator Gino Cresta. Myself, as well as other Select Board members, only found out about this second legal opinion on March 19th, the day of the special town meeting, when we received an email regarding the opinion. While this infraction by a current sitting Select Board member and former Finance Committee member is bad, what happens next is worse. There is now a legal bill due of $8,460 for this unauthorized legal bill, so this isn't included in this 98,650. So there's an additional $8,460 for this unauthorized legal bill. In an attempt to cover up this unauthorized expense, two weeks ago, Select Board member Fletcher approached former Director of Finance Amy Saro, requesting that these funds be moved to pay this unauthorized bill. Amy Saro then informed Mary Ellen Fletcher, as well as the rest of the Select Board and the town administrator, that this bill cannot be paid as it was not authorized. Despite being told by the Finance Director that this bill cannot be paid, Select Board member Fletcher then went to another Town Hall finance employee, requesting to override that guidance and violate mass general law. Select Board member Fletcher, you've committed malfeasance and then attempted to cover this up by asking a Town Hall employee to violate the law after you were already told no. Fortunately, and I'm happy to report, town finance staff did not do what was asked. What happens next, and how is this bill paid? Well, the invoice would be for the $8,460 would need to be included in a warrant article at a future town meeting. This would require a four-fifths vote per mass general law. However, Swampscott taxpayers, in my view, shouldn't be on the hook for your unauthorized expenditures, Mary Ellen, and I feel strongly there should be a consequence to your actions. At a minimum, this should include you covering this unauthorized expense personally and at no cost to the taxpayers of Swampscott.
First, Mr. Grishman, once again, you are just here to try to malign me, to make things up, and to lie, and this is just part of your MO constantly. It is common practice...
Which, which part is, which part is incorrect?
Excuse me, Mr. Grishman. It is common practice for, to reach out and to get consulting information. To, for us to ask other legal, to ask other legal comments about what is, for a second opinion, especially on Pine Street, is totally normal and would be something that we should do. And Mr. Cresta was aware that we were asking for a, no, it was not any secret. The, the community development director was fully aware, the housing, was it called housing, affordable housing was aware. It was very important that we had a second opinion, especially when, at times, we have been concerned about the opinions from KP Law. So went to this other law firm just to double-check to make sure our opinion was fine. There is a line item under the TA's account for consulting, so the money is absolutely there, the money was always there. This is not a big issue. This is just one more issue of you trying to malign me. And as far as me asking someone to move money around, there is no money to move around. There is money right in that line item to pay the bill. So it's just, you know, I, I don't know what to do. This is just, this is regular, this is regular fees. I mean, if you... I mean, if you really want to talk about some of the reasons why our legal fees are so high, turn around and look at, at all of these FOIA requests that you make. I mean, let's, why don't we just stop and, and just move on? But if you keep going against me, keep going at me, I, I really.
Mary Ellen, you didn't, you, this is an unauthorized expense. You unilaterally made a decision in a, in a time that we are looking and reconciling and spending hours here.
I did not unilaterally make a decision. I did not unilaterally make a decision. Similar to, let me, let me just, we can go back to when you were the chair and you needed to hire a consulting company to come up with a library at the Hawthorne. That was never voted on, discussed, anything, nothing. So you're, you're trying to single me out for something that was under $10,000, no issues whatsoever. There's a line item for a consulting, and you're just trying to make an issue that's not there. That's what you're trying to do, Mr. Grishman, and I just don't know what to say.
You've committed malfeasance and you're attempting to cover it up. This was unauthorized. All you had to do was get a vote of the select board or approval from the town administrator. Neither of which happened.
The town administrator was fully aware of everything we were doing in there. And at any time, the town administrator would say, oh, I, I don't think we should do this, or I don't think we should be spending this. It's not like, you know, there's something secretive going on.
This board, this board was not made aware of this. We, the first we heard of this was on March 19th. I have the legal bill. I have it. The legal, the legal bill basically, basically shows that you weren't, you were on six different phone calls back from February. There was never any knowledge or information that was shared with this board about the scope of work, about this firm. There was literally six different times, and you never thought that you should bring this up to the board. That's not normal. That's not okay.
It is totally not abnormal, Mr. Grishman. As you know, as the chairman, with all your conversations with consultants while you were the chair, it's, it was just common practice. And all my conversations were also with the vice chair. The town administrator, the director of community development, there's were no secrets here whatsoever. You're just trying to make this out to be something it's not.
And you didn't.
We have the line item. It's under consulting line item. It's right there to be paid.
You didn't, you directed, you directed a town employee to violate mass general?
I absolutely did not. That is ridiculous.
You absolutely did.
I did not.
Mr. Cresta.
No.
I mean, it happened, Mary Ellen. It happened. And you're.
I'm sorry, but I did not ask. Right.
I'm, I'm asking Mr. Cresta if, if, if it's his knowledge that that, that occurred.
If he was present, if I asked an employee to pay, to, what was it you're saying I asked an employee to do?
To, to reallocate funds against the guidance of our former director of finance and town administration.
There's no reallocation of funds. There are funds available. In the line item, there are funds available. I'm not asking to reallocate funds. There are the funds. It's under consulting.
Unauthorized expense.
Right there. It's not an unauthorized expenditure.
Here's, here's the process that was used, which at least some of us were not aware of, which is uncommon. I won't say it's unprecedented, but it is uncommon for the board not to be engaged in hiring outside consultants. Not going to go back and relitigate the whole Pine Street thing, okay? But it was uncommon. And in that process, there was no engagement letter signed. So therefore, a outside resource was engaged without having an engagement letter. And that is the reason that the former director of finance felt that she could not authorize that expense being in here.
How many bills do we sign? How many times do we engage that we don't have engagement letters? How many times? Let's see. Pine Street, our legal practice, our legal from Pine Street, no engagement letter. So.
What do you mean?
Our lawyer for.
Kurt James.
Kurt James. We don't have an engagement letter from Kurt James. That is not, we don't, we don't always have engagement letters. They're not even called engagement letters. It's not mass general law to have an engagement letter. You know?
Well, I'm not, I, doesn't seem to be the opinion of the person who is in the role to adjudicate that, and that's why it's not.
Who is this person? Amy, Amy Saro? Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but Amy Saro, does she have an email from me saying move funds around? Did she have a conversation?
I'm just talking about, I'm sticking to the agenda item here, which is why it's not in this.
It's not in this because there's, there's money in the budget to pay the bill. That, there's, because there's no reason for it to be here. There is, the money is there.
You expect Gino to pay this bill with funds?
Yes, I think Gino should be paying this bill under the TA consulting line item.
I, I do want to say one thing here, and we can all disagree amongst the five of us and have difference of opinion here on what's happened, past administrations, past select board members, past chairs. What I don't want to see is any of us putting this man on the hot seat because I don't believe, you know, and if we did something that we shouldn't have, maybe we didn't follow the right procedure, and we, we, it's a learning moment for us, and we need to know that this is how we need to proceed going forward, that's fine. That's on us to own. That's not, it's not appropriate to put town employees in this position, okay? I, I don't know whether or not Gino knew what, or, or, I don't really know. Or Amy Saro, or Mar, none of these people matter, right? If this is a squabble amongst the five of us, let's settle it, let's own it, let's figure out what we did wrong, and let's fix it. Simple, right? So if you're saying there's money there to pay this bill, there's money there to pay this bill. But let's also own it that we didn't go about it the right way, right? We didn't take the right steps. We didn't take a vote of this board, right? We obviously did it without, you know, three of us, or at least three of us saying, okay, do this, right? And commit to not engaging in that type of behavior going forward, right? And we are going to adjust how we do things because there, obviously, this has come up before. This has been, you know, we can sit here and point fingers and say, you did it as chair, the five chairs before you did it. The fact of the matter is, it happened here, this time, recently, when you were the chair, and we, we just did it the wrong way. It's really simple. We have the money, if we have the money, and can someone confirm that for me, that we do have the funds available for that?
We might.
We might. It, should it come out of the TA consulting budget? Probably not, because it doesn't sound to me like it was something the TA came to us and said, do you guys want to engage in this? Is this something we should do, right? And I'm not going to put somebody in that position who, quite frankly, you know, is, is interviewing every day for this job, right? So I don't think it's fair to put him in the spot to say, oh, I said it, I didn't say it. That's not, that's not the right call, right? The chair made the decision, and no, you know, not saying it was a good decision or a bad decision. Let's own it. We'll fix it going forward. We won't, you know, we, there's a, a new procedure, right? We'll go over procedure, and we'll, we'll vote on things as a group, right? And we'll come to a collective, and that's how we proceed, right? That's the new select board, right? But I don't want to see us putting town employees in an uncomfortable, inappropriate position because I really don't think it's on them. It's on us. It's on the five of us, right? That's just what my opinion is.
It is, it is on us, Danielle, but it's also, it's also on us to ensure that we're, you know, that we're properly and effectively communicating and we're following the rules.
Absolutely.
And we're making sure that, we're making sure that town employees aren't put in a difficult situation where they're, where they're faced with taking direction from the town administrator, who is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the town, or a select board member.
Yep.
And I know all of us at, at some point have, you know, have, are, are guilty of that, but we all need to do a better job of this. We all need to make sure that there is a chain of command, and we all need to make sure that we're, that we're, that we're delegating to the town administrator. We should all be communicating with the town administrator. You know, going around the town administrator is, is, is not acceptable. It just, it just causes chaos, as we've, as we've seen. So again, I think the, the select board should stay out of the day-to-day operations of the town. Leave that to the professional staff and the town administrator. Leave that in his capable hands and in, in his team's hands, and we can set the policy.
So I would suggest there's three issues here. One is, we need to vote on the fiscal year-end transfers, the agenda item that we're ostensibly talking about here. And the second one is how we pay that invoice. And the third is, we're going to be taking up the select board handbook and making it very clear what the handbook says, what the interaction is with town hall staff, and making sure that everyone agrees to and signs that handbook and abides by it. We'll be doing that at our next meeting. So, so I would look for a motion to approve the fiscal year-end transfers as recommended by the interim town administrator. So moved.
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on. To rodents. Deb, are you gonna give us a tour?
All right, can you hear me? So I'm Deb Newman, and I really appreciate being able to give this presentation. I believe that all of you likely are opposed to second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides or SGARs. And I think most of us know that they kill not just rats and mice, but also any other animal who eats affected rats or mice. The outcry against ESKRs about the needless deaths of hawks, owls, eagles, foxes, coyotes, and others whose diet depends on rodents. Mass Audubon has a successful campaign against ESKRs called Save, and insert the name of the municipality, Wildlife. And they asked me to head up Save Swambskot Wildlife. I declined because I want Swambskot to go a step further than Mass Audubon, who, because they admittedly feared too much pushback, stopped short of recommending two very consequential components in their policies. Components that they believe in, that they believe in and espouse on their website. That is a complete prohibition of ESKR use and consideration for the suffering of the rodents we poison by any means. Mass Audubon also references the practices of a good friend of mine, Rebecca Demitrik, who owns Humane Wildlife Control Incorporated in California, and was recognized in 2020 with the Integrated Pest Management Achievement Award from the California EPA Department of Pesticide Regulation in 2020.
Hey Deb, can you center, are we still on the first slide, or should we be moving?
Yes.
We are, okay.
Yeah, I'll let her know. Yeah, I'm sorry for making this so long, but. So, you know, I'm very privileged to know her. The award specifically acknowledged her use of humane and environmentally friendly methods in resolving wildlife conflicts using compassion and respect for all animals. She and Mass Audubon emphasized that the best rodent management is trash management, and that bait is just another food source to draw them to an area. Despite all the poisoned bait we put out, rodents are still in Swambskot. Next slide, Diane. Please.
So I mention my nonprofit because it's the entity bringing you this presentation, and I want to reiterate that my approach to the topic, including what's in the handouts I gave you, is from an animal advocacy standpoint. I note that I'm a lawyer only because the proposals that I gave you to contemplate are legal in nature and written by me. So this is just a little fun piece of trivia that's really not so trivial. Next slide, Diane. For centuries, rats have taken the rap for spreading one of the worst and longest-running pandemics in human history, the Black Death. Since then, we've been reinforced to react to rats with disgust, panic, and a fierce desire to eradicate them by any means. Yes, rats, like most animals, can carry the fleas that in turn carry the bacteria that cause plague. But, this is very interesting, recent studies have shown that plague was actually spread by human fleas and human body lice. Further spread of the disease was through human-to-human contact, just like COVID. Next slide, please. As you may know, ESKRs cause a grisly death by disrupting vitamin K's recycling in the body. So an animal who ingests them will bleed out in a few days. Massachusetts municipalities have no jurisdiction to regulate rodenticide use through local laws. Excuse me. But they can control application on public property by policy. This should include a complete ban on certain poisons, especially ESKRs. Even more important is setting the example for and educating residents, restaurant owners, and managers of condo complexes to stop using ESKRs and try lower-risk alternatives. I've seen many ESKR-containing boxes outside condo complexes and food establishments. Why? Because ESKRs are the go-to for exterminators. The Swambskot Health Department should promote alternatives and not simply recommend that residents call an exterminator if they have a problem. Next slide, please. The beginning of this year, I was told that Swambskot had stopped using ESKRs on public property and that we don't need an official policy to ban them because the few people in charge of rodent management had agreed to stop using ESKRs. As much as I believe these particular people's intentions, I don't think we should rely on a gentleman's agreement for something this serious. We need a real policy that anyone can understand and follow. Around that same time, I found seven bait boxes labeled broda fakum, which is an ESKR, and 13 with no label but otherwise similar to the ESKR bait boxes. At the end of May, I found on six town properties at least eight unlabeled bait boxes that could contain ESKRs. Legally, only indoor bait boxes must be labeled with their ingredients. But given that these could contain ESKRs, everyone should be able to identify what kind of poison is on public property, especially at schools. And if they are housing snap traps, we should be allowed to know what bait is inside. The only way I found out what actually had been used was by making a public records request of documents related to pesticides and exterminators. Next slide. This is an example of an IPM plan that are required at a Swambskot school, daycare, or early learning center. This is the list of pesticides that was used at the Swambskot Middle School, at least through November 2023. The form asks for the type of pests that have historically and/or currently been a problem. Repeatedly mentioned are mosquitoes and termites. Rodents are never mentioned, yet ESKRs are listed. This could be an oversight, of course, but the IPM plan is recorded with the state, so it should be accurate. Important to note that the ESKR used is broda fakum technical, which is 95% concentration of the rodenticide. At that level, it's also fatal to humans, companion animals, and non-target wildlife if swallowed, inhaled, absorbed through the skin, or in the eyes. So without home rule, which I'll get to shortly, the town has no authority over rodent management at private schools. Still, just as an example, the First Church Nursery School's IPM plan form states that rats were seen when trash was being removed there. They called A1 exterminators who laid out bait stations, and I'll bet anything that those contain ESKRs. The most significant piece of this is that the rats were at the trash site, which typically means it's not being properly managed. If it were, rodent control would be less of an issue. Next slide. Please. This is a small sampling of what to do better to eliminate the need for so many rodenticides of any form. The biggest attractant, as everybody knows, for rodents is trash and other food sources. The open barrels depicted are at Hadley. The other barrels are behind the fire station. And although they look neat and clean, a firefighter told me that the barrels regularly need replacement because rats keep chewing through them. The question is, what is in those barrels that is so attractive to rats? Are leftover meals or other foodstuffs being discarded in the trash rather than put in a garbage disposal or secure compost bin? And I'm not blaming anybody by asking this, I'm just saying. If they must go into the bin, maybe we could invest in rat-proof barrels, which do exist, or keep the barrels inside the building until pickup. Next slide. So on to policies. Mass Audubon's campaign helped to get these bans and proposals that are on the slide. More are happening and they're hotting. However, as I mentioned, many of the policies are flawed. They allow for emergency ESKR use in even a more liberal way than the proposed state rodenticide bill, which at least requires a written rationale for using ESKRs instead of short-term alternatives. To have a real effect on saving birds of prey, coyotes, and other rodent-loving mammals, and even outdoor cats and dogs, we need to ban ESKRs completely. Allowing 14-day emergency use is ridiculously counterproductive. And that's what Mass Audubon has recommended, and that's what the state bill also recommends of 14-day emergency use. Effective low-risk alternatives exist. Effective low-risk alternatives exist for a so-called emergency. Cholecalciferol, corn gluten, and CO2 are examples of those. Not that these cause pleasant deaths for rodents. Cholecalciferol, which is high-dose vitamin D, causes kidney and heart failure over several days. Corn gluten prevents neuromessaging of thirst, so rodents slowly and painfully dehydrate. CO2 can cause distress and pain if not administered by gradual displacement of air, a process that may be hard to control in the extermination boxes. The National Institute of Health reported that death by CO2 for lab rats is no longer considered humane. And I know our rats are not lab rats, but they're still alive. You don't have to read this whole slide, I just want to make the point that this is part of the state bill, and if passed, it won't take effect until January of 2027. It restricts use to licensed applicators, aka exterminators, in public health emergencies only, but unfortunately also allows up to 14 days' worth... I'm sorry. Thanks, Diane. 14 days' worth of ESKR application in an emergency. Again, that's counterproductive. And unless and until the bill passes, exterminators are free to apply ESKRs on any private property at any time. So it's sort of like swimming against the tide... Next slide, Diane, thank you. Because even if we are wonderful and publicly ban them on public property, everybody else is still putting them down, all the private people. So also, it's important to note that the state's definition, shown on the slide, of a public health emergency is something dire and imminent. So I'd be surprised if we actually have one caused by rodents. Maybe you should take a sec to actually read that definition. Many communities, including ours, consider any congregation of rats to be an infestation and an emergency. Another problem is that some policies allow one single local official to arbitrarily decide if emergency use is warranted. We should define this term in our policy, and I suggest that the authority to implement emergency applications should be by order of at least two officials chosen among the health director, the town administrator, and the DPW director. Next slide.
Is this the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I jumped ahead, sorry.
That's all right. Federal law prevents consumers from buying ESKRs directly. Thank goodness. But, as mentioned, they can hire an exterminator to apply them. Home Rule would allow the town to completely prohibit ESKRs on public and private property with a bylaw. Also, we could better ensure use of lower-risk alternatives if a public health emergency truly happens. I gave each of you handouts of a proposed version of a policy, a warrant article, home rule petition, and a bylaw for Swamscot. And I just want to point out that the local policy and the local bylaw, you don't have the local bylaw because it's pretty much the same as the local policy. And yes, I've put some focus on the humane aspect and use of lower-risk rodenticides, so I hope you and town council give that consideration. Creating the local policy to prohibit ESKRs will also mean changing some current bylaws, for example, the sections about rodent control under earth removal. Currently, the type of bait is not specified there. Getting Home Rule could take some time, but there's nothing wrong in filing. Lots of municipalities have, and, you know, they're still waiting for an answer, but at least they're working on it. Next slide, please. So, I got a couple of questions for town council, and I say I think I can guess the answers to these, but I'd like to ask anyway. So, though the town has no direct legal authority over pesticide use on private property, it can tell contractors that they must use IPM during earth removal. And my question is, if Swamscot has a policy for types of rodenticides allowed on town property, can the policy extend to the IPM choices? And my second question, which I think the answer is no, could that be generalized to limit rodenticide choices to non-ESKRs only in certain permits for restaurants, supermarkets, and other establishments that sell food? I don't know what you can do in a permit, so it's kind of confounded with the fact that we don't really have jurisdiction to tell private people what to do, as far as pesticides go. Next slide, please. So, I want to make you aware of two methods of controlling rodent populations that have the lowest risk to any other wildlife and are the most humane to rodents. Initially, they are more effective when used together. The shock boxes can be baited with peanut butter or a lower-risk rodenticide that I mentioned earlier. Contrapest is a contraceptive for rats and mice, and it doesn't affect other animals who may ingest it. After a year, you can see up to a 95% reduction in population. And that is important in the sense that, you know, we're baiting and baiting and baiting, and we're still having lots of rodents, so... In February, I called A1 exterminators to see if they could give an estimate on using shock boxes plus contrapest. They said they'd have to talk with a town official to see what's needed. The shock boxes are good for outdoor use, and on Amazon, they're $78 for two, so it's not expensive. And I have a connection who discounts the contrapest bait stations and the bait for them from municipalities. In March, I talked with Max Casper, I see him there, who suggested a pilot program at Fisherman's Beach might be possible when I asked about that. And if the town doesn't want to pay for a pilot program, speak up for Animals Will. I'm almost done. So, next slide, Diane, thank you. My final comments are about the flyer on the town website. It is bad. Please replace it. Although it does have suggestions about trash and tightening up your property, ultimately it promotes the idea that wildlife is our enemy. Whenever wildlife encroaches upon humans, we seem to ignore our part in creating the problem and opt to kill off the so-called nuisance. Also, everyone needs to know that removal of live wildlife applies to any wild animal you want off your property. Squirrels in the attic, raccoons under the deck, et cetera. The law requires that when caught, if they are not released directly on your property, they are to be euthanized. Your exterminator or problem animal control agent may tell you they use humane methods, but they mean that the trapping will be humane. Likely, they won't ask permission to release the animals on your property, or tell you that they are taking the animals back to their office to put into a CO2 chamber to kill. Often, in spring and summer, these are mothers with a bunch of babies. And regarding glue boards, they're used in our schools and elsewhere indoors. These are horrifically inhumane, and we should stop contributing to that. A couple of teachers told me they were appalled to find them. They're so barbaric that Congress is considering a bill to ban their sale nationwide. Next slide. So here's a summary, you guys all have the slides, so you can look at the summary and think. This is what I think a good rodenticide policy should include, and, you know, I'm hoping that you'll let me collaborate on instituting a policy and proposing a warrant article for Home Rule. Next slide, please. So, when reading the proposals I've handed out, please remember this slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Appreciate that. So, at this moment in time, what exactly do you... I know you've kind of said it, but just to boil it all down, what exactly do you hope would happen first?
First, I would hope that there would be a policy that, if it can't include a more humane method, which would be the shock boxes and contrapest around town, then at least definitely not using ESKRs, and maybe using the cholecalciferol or the corn gluten. You know, I'm not thrilled with either one of those. I know there are CO2 things going on in town, you know, I've seen them. You know, those aren't great either in a humane sense, but ESKRs, the problem with them is that they kill a lot of other animals, too. I can't help but be concerned for the way that the rodents are treated and killed. They're just like any other wildlife. So that would be the first thing, to have an actual policy, as I say, so there's not a gentleman's agreement, like, oh, we won't use them because we don't even know what's in those boxes anymore, the labels have been removed, which was a little weird. And the other thing is, I really would like to see if there's money in the budget, and I know there probably isn't, but it wouldn't cost a lot, to do a pilot program at Fisherman's Beach, which is supposed to be a heinous attractant for rodents, of shock boxes and contrapest, and see what happens. The, you know, the contrapest can take months to have any effect, but that's why you use the shock boxes with it. You know, I'm not thrilled with that either, but it is the most humane method of killing rodents, so...
Okay.
That's all.
Just, the board wanted... I was also going to wonder whether or not we should have Gino respond in any way first, but whatever.
Oh, go ahead. No, Gino, I defer to town administrator.
If you have thoughts about this, I just wanted to give you a chance to educate us about... I'm sure you and Deb have talked about this in the past.
We have. And I like, support Max's idea of doing a pilot at the fish house.
Oh, thank you.
Predominantly, that's where we get most of our complaints, although I think we get a lot of them.
Blaney, we have, we've been in date on Blaney Street. I would rather, if it's possible, I'd rather see Blaney Street before the fish house, only because that whole neighborhood there gets hit really hard.
Yep, that was my second option.
Yeah.
Thoughts, Max? Doesn't matter, right? Well, one's private property.
Has the health director weighed in at all on this? The actual health director, who, this is his domain, right? Have we talked to him?
The only thing I've talked to Jeff about mostly is the, the thing that's on the website that's...
Flyer.
The flyer, that's kind of hateful to rodents, but I haven't talked about a pilot program with him, I don't think. It was a while ago that I talked with you, and I don't remember if I talked with Jeff at this point.
Yeah, Deb, thank you for the presentation. I just, I just wanted to clarify, when you, when you speak about CO2, to me, that can mean a couple of different things, because there's, there's CO2 used in pest control in a couple of different ways. They, they will actually use the gas into the, into the holes to kill the rats. We have done that. And then the boxes that we have in multiple locations in town, they, you may call them CO2, but it's not that they're being, like, poisoned by CO2, it's actually a piston in a very quick death, similar to a shock. And I, we've done that at the fish house, we've done that here at the high school, and we've done it at town hall. We've actually removed quite a bit of rodents with that, that option. I don't know if, to me, that sounds like a similar approach to the shock boxes, but I just wanted to get your opinion on that.
Only, I do understand that they have a piston in them, yes, but they may be, the inhalation of the CO2 at any point is a bummer for them. It's painful. So, I would rather see them, you know, killed immediately without CO2, if possible. That's all.
Don't we already have a policy in place that we don't, we don't use the rodent...
Right. Yes, we're not using ESKRs, that's correct.
Since 2022, we don't.
I don't think there's a policy in place, but we have been...
It was just Mr. Fitzgerald, I know, was really serious about that.
So I know when we had an issue with rodents on the monument, we used CO2. We pumped the CO2 into the rat hole.
Mm-hmm.
It worked very well. I don't know what it did to the rats, but I don't know how they suffered.
Unfortunately, if you have any moles or anybody else living underground, they're also dead. But, just, not to be argumentative at all, I went around and actually looked at the boxes because when I spoke with Max, he said, "We're not using ESKRs," but there were seven boxes labeled Broda Facum, which is an ESKR, with a label, so...
Some of those boxes, I think, have been left out for years, that the company has left them behind.
That's, of course, possible.
Yeah. I know we had one at the DPW that sat there for years, so...
Well, when I looked through A1's, and I forget the name of the other company that Swamscot uses for extermination, there was still listed the use of ESKRs, yes, past 2022, and even more recently.
Deb, thank you for your presentation. So what, what is the half-life of, of ESKRs? So if, if we do have boxes that are lying around that have...
I don't know. I, I don't know, but it doesn't take much, depending on the size of another animal who eats one. I, I think if it's just sitting as bait, I shouldn't answer, but I don't, I feel as if...
I just want to know if, I just want to know if just sitting around is, if it's, if it's harmful, or if after a number of years, or months, or what have you, it becomes in there.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
It's a good question.
All right, so it sounds like we'll kind of work on a pilot, Blaney and Fisherman's?
Who should I talk with about?
You're going to pay for it, Deb? Is that what you said?
I will pay for it.
Yep, your organization's going to pay for it?
So if we do it on Blaney, is that going to be on private property?
Well, the problem that might happen from that is that if there's a lot of trash stuff going on from the restaurants there, it might be counterproductive. But, I mean, I know the fish house is very stinky, too, so we kind of, I would like to be able to speak with them. I think it is all private property, like, behind, that's where the bakery used to be, that was all private property.
I don't think it would be, I don't think people would have a prob... I mean, this is something you can probably just work out.
No, I mean, I...
But I don't think anybody have a problem, yeah.
When we used to work with Gotti in pest control, he said he couldn't put his bait boxes on public property, right? Like, couldn't put them on the sidewalk or the street. It would have to be, you know, in the back of the restaurants. We just need to get their permission.
I mean, isn't this something the health director should be figuring out? Isn't he the point of contact for something like this?
I think that's what Deb was just asking, who she should be working with, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I find it, you know, a little frustrating that he's not here to actually, like, this is his issue, this is an issue...
Did you say Jeff?
Mm-hmm. That he would be directly responsible for, right? He should be here to be able to, you know, discuss or contact these companies to see if indeed they are using ESKRs or whatnot. We, we could know that, he could find that out.
I didn't invite him, I mean, I didn't think to, so...
No, I mean, you should, you should...
Well, he didn't know.
Right.
But, I mean, it's like if we were talking about community development, we would have Marzi here, right? So I don't think we can, you know, do anything without him. I think he's the first person that really knows this stuff better than I do, or...
Yeah, I agree.
Anybody else up here.
Okay.
He'll be your contact.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Juan.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you for your patience. I know we kept moving you further and further.
Oh, I...
Looked up on Google the half-life.
Oh, goodie. What is it?
Best part of especially, you know,...
Okay.
Okay.
Want to take control?
Yep.
Thank you, Wayne.
That's okay, we're not, we're not going to delve into the half-life of ESKRs. Okay, next topic. We're going to have a joint meeting. Thank you for the Housing Authority being with us tonight. Do you all need to kind of gavel in? You're in already? Okay, fantastic. So, we have you all doing a presentation, Charlie, and then Max. Did you want to start off, Max? Does that make sense, Charlie? Okay. Just give us a little background about the Clark School and what the thoughts have been so far.
Sure, thanks, Doug. Yeah, I provided a quick memo for the board. The Clark School is still under the control of the school department. Obviously, it stopped being used as an elementary school at the end of last school year, when we opened up the new elementary school. It's been mostly vacant this year. There's been some limited use. As you're aware, we moved Big Blue Bargains into the portables. There's been storage on the, on the top floor. We, you know, when we did the massive move, we took all of the best stuff that was not being repurposed and, and filled three of the classrooms, and have actually utilized quite a bit of that stuff in the, in the different...
and, and filled three of the classrooms, and have actually utilized quite a bit of that stuff in the, in the different buildings through the, through the course of the year. Big Blue Bargains has also been using one of the classrooms to store some of their larger items for longer term. That's been working out well for them. And then the recreation department is using the building quite heavily on the first floor and outside this summer for their park league program. There's been a lot of discussion over the years as to what the, the next use of the Clark School would be for the school department. At this time, talking with the leadership at the school, talking with the leadership internally on the town side, the consensus internally within the town and school is to retain control of the Clark School in the medium term for potential reuse by the school in maybe three to five years, when we expect there to be movement with the middle school project and a potential need for swing space. That's, you know, obviously, a little bit far out. There's a lot of things that need to happen, but we saw with the elementary school, the, how critical it was to have some swing space to be able to successfully implement that project, and I think there's a likelihood that Clark could be a, a very useful building for us in the future. On the other side, you don't really wanna see a building just sit, and for the most part, it is predominantly sitting at this point, and that's, that's not a good thing. So we are recommending that we look to lease the building on a, on a relatively short term, probably about a three-year lease. We've started to work on an RFP and get the ball rolling on that. That would be something that would be done through this board, a lease of that building, even though it's controlled by the school department, but it would require the consent of the school committee. The superintendent and I recently met with the school committee to fill them in on this situation and solicit some feedback. So I think, you know, I, I look at myself here, kind of presenting this concept, and looking for feedback either tonight, or moving forward, or what you may like to see in that RFP. And, you know, we have the ability to control the uses and the intensity of the uses through that process.
Great. Can you just, why, why the select board when it's controlled by the school?
Yeah, actually, you know, checked with town council to understand exactly what that process is, because it was a little bit unclear. And because it is a, a lease of real property, that does need to be done through the select board.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions for Max right now? I think we can certainly, yeah?
No, just, yeah, Max. So just a quick, quick thought about an RFP, is there a reason that we would do an RFP rather than an RFI? In this instance, I know, I know for the Mashawn School, for instance, in 2017 or 2018, there was an RFI process. And, and then we kind of got a, a number of ideas and thoughts from community members and, and businesses and affordable housing. And then that, that kind of took us in a direction, so I'm just curious if that was considered.
Sure, yeah, I mean, the, an RFP is like, is a formal procurement process and step that we would have to follow in order to lease real property. An RFI is sort of an optional tool that we have, if we're, if we're looking to solicit feedback and, and ideas. So that's, that's how I look at the distinction.
Got it.
Maybe we'll circle back to that after we hear from the Housing Authority in terms of that question. Danielle, Mary Ellen?
Yeah, the one question I have is, is still as far as what about the needs of the community? I mean, I know last year, Mr. Fitzgerald brought up the fact that there's a possibility, what about if we use this for recreation? And because you hear the recreation director was constantly saying how, you know, there's not enough space in town, and you also heard from the senior center director, there's not enough space in town, and they're thinking about putting out an RFP to build a new community center. And I'm just wondering, are we gonna revisit that at all, as far as using that as a community center? Or we're just gonna let that forego and just, then just possibly just rent it out, maybe another school district needs it, or something like that? Just where are we with, with that conversation?
I mean, I, I know that that, that conversation last year sort of put a pause in any discussions of, of leasing the building, because we, we really thought that recreation and the senior center potentially was gonna use it, and, you know, for a variety of reasons, that, that didn't come to fruition, and that's kind of why we're back, back at this option.
Yeah, no, just to be clear, I mean, the reason we're having this discussion tonight is because the Housing Authority has asked to have this conversation for a little while, and I think they have some thoughts about that need to be part of the mix. So Danielle, do you have any thoughts or questions before we?
No, I'd like to hear from them, really, but that's all that I really wanted.
Mr. Patzios?
Hello, I'm Charlie Patzios, I'm the chair of the Housing Authority of, actually, yes.
Joe, is that, is that on?
I'll start over. Charlie Patzios, the chair of the Housing Authority, I'm also the governor's appointee to the Swamp Scott Housing Authority, so I kind of have one position, but two, two, two angles of looking at it. This is the first time I think we've actually ever stepped in front of the town to have a conversation like this, at least in recent memory. And, and I'm glad to be able to do it. The Swamp, the Swamp Scott Housing Authority, when I first came on, and by the way, we have, we have an executive director, Kevin Johnson, who's here, who's done a remarkable job. I just wanna thank Kevin publicly. When we, when, when I stepped onto the board and I was the vice chair at the time, we were in a situation where the state comes in and grades the Housing Authority, and they give us, they give us a score. And that score is based on how well we do, how few violations or recommendations for area of improvement. When we got on, we had 34 areas of recommendation for improvement. We are down to four, 34 to four. That's because the board is taking what we have to do on the recommendations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts extremely seriously. Our waiting list to get into the Swamp Scott Housing Authority, and I'm not going to make a mistake, is over 90,000 people on that list. It's a statewide list, and Swamp Scott has a 90,000, what's the real number, Kevin? Eighty-nine, 90,000, we fluctuate. So 90,000 is a safe number to, to say, but if we said 89, I don't think that it would make that much of a difference. The state also comes in and grades the locations of the four properties. If you have a score of 15 or below, you're doing well. If you have a score of above 15, you need work. And if you're, you know, if you're in the 30 and 40 range, you're in trouble. Swamp Scott has one out of four at 13, and the others are in the 30s and 40s. In other words, we're not in good shape. The state has recognized that. At the state's recommendation, the Swamp Scott Housing Authority has been asked to create a second agency. So Ed Augustus visited us, he was the secretary of housing, and he visited us, and he looked at everything, and he said, you guys really need to do something. You really need to do something now. What can we do? Well, the state recommended that we create a second agency, a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). Helps us to be competitive with other entities like the Bene Briths of the world and folks like that. And I mention them because we know them. And so the Swamp Scott Affordable Housing Development Corporation has been created. We now have two agencies. One, there's a state agency, Swamp Scott Housing Authority, and a second agency. We're gonna be seating the board soon. We'll be coming to discuss that with you, but we have been recognized by the state. Our license and numbers have been issued. We are real. So what we're here to discuss tonight is of vital importance to the town of Swamp Scott. We know, after three different housing studies that we've, that we've funded with the state's help, they come back telling us the same thing. We are woefully inadequate in the town of Swamp Scott with public housing and subsidized housing. Now, we've got a couple of things that we've done, they are not addressing the problem, they are nowhere near addressing the problem, especially when it comes to senior public housing, which we need to do much with. And our, and our prime examples, Duncan and Doherty are in deplorable condition according to the state. What we have is an opportunity today, where we've spent $170 million on education, we've spent zero on public housing, zero. That is a tiny, tiny, and embarrassing amount of money. A zero does not go a long way. And when you don't have a roof over your head, it becomes a real problem. We wanna do, we talk about it in Swamp Scott, we talk an awful lot about it. What have we actually done about it? Well, this board is in a unique position, because historically, the other boards in town have let public buildings sit for not months, but years, to the point of where they become in such bad shape that we tear them down and we sell them to developers for housing. So we've lost the Hadley, we've lost the Mashawn, we've lost the Greenwood High School and Middle School, depending on when you wanna talk about it. And out of the three public buildings, only one has become housing, only one. So I sit here in front of you tonight, and I'm saying, please, you're gonna receive this building at some point. Is it gonna be one month, one year, three years, five years? We don't know. But the plan to hold it for swing space means we're gonna be putting money into the middle school. Please put some money into our housing for our seniors, and for people that desperately need that help. And this board has the authority to do it once it's turned, once the property is turned over to you. And I ask you that when you fund the school department, and you fund it properly, and I'm, and I'm an advocate for, for school education, that we do a great job, but at the same time, we can't neglect our seniors. We can't neglect the Swamp Scott Housing Authority's position that we find ourselves in, where we've, the, the youngest building we have is 1961, and we've put nothing into it. Handicapped accessibility is minimal in a few units. And truly, we've tried to adapt buildings that are not ADA compliant and do the best we can to make them ADA compliant. So we're in a position, guys, if I, am I doing okay, anything that we wanna? So what we're here tonight to ask your help in is to think about funding the schools appropriately. At the same time, to take the Clark School and to look at an RFP to rent it to another school district at a time when we're in crisis in Swamp Scott. And by the way, when we look at the Clark School, we're not looking at it selfishly, even though we're desperate. We're looking at it in a few different ways. We have enough space where we can relocate the senior center, which is located in the high school, over to this building. That will free up several thousand square feet at the high school. That might be your administrative offices. That will give you additional space at the middle school for more classroom space. We could take them in there. We can also work with the school department and maybe some early education courses or classes. We can designate an area of that. We can still work with Big Blue. We're not saying that we're, that we want this for ourselves, even though we desperately need it. Please hear the voices of the people that so far haven't been heard. We need your help, we can't do it alone. What is the state willing to do? The state has said to us that if the town of Swamp Scott were to own the school, that it would come to our aid in giving us money, reimbursement money, and the upper end, 70 to 80 percent reimbursement, to be able to rebuild that school, potentially add maybe a floor onto it, or reconfigure it. Those are, I won't even say a vision, I'll say a dream right now, because we can't start to live our reality until this board provides us the opportunity to, to go to work. We have two agencies, the Swamp Scott Housing Authority and the Swamp Scott Housing Development Corporation. We are ready. The state says we're ready. Our needs have not diminished, they've grown. I ask you, if not now, when? This is vitally important, and we can do it with this board, because this board has not let a building sit. This board has the opportunity to make a difference. Your names can go on that as caring for the people that need the most and have the least offered to them. I don't think that there's another chance like this. It's centrally located, there's a bus route nearby, there's open space outdoors. We're willing to work with the school department, Big Blue Bargains, the senior center, and if there's something else that we missed, let us know. The Swamp Scott, the, Kim Epstein's.
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing Trust is in a unique position. It is loaded with, you wanna talk about smart people? They know what we need. We're very fortunate also, our newest member, Deb Nutter here, ran the Caleb Foundation. We are ready, we are ready, we're, we are, we're prepared, because we possess the expertise, the knowledge, and the willingness of the state to help us. The governor so, has said so herself. So I ask you, I, I understand that the school is looking at its needs. We need places for people to live. So maybe there's an accommodation that in three years or five years, when you need that swing space, it would have been cheaper to, at that time, go for some modular space like the town of Watertown did when it tore down its high school, and the entire high school was in a modular setting. I, I know, because I, I grew up in Watertown, and I know what happens there. My mom and dad tell me all the time. But Swamp Scott has an opportunity, and I think that the select board controls aspects of the school budget. And I encourage you to fund it as generously as possible, but please, in that process, don't forget about us. We have sat by, the seniors have voted for the high school when it was built. It wouldn't have passed without the senior vote. That's why the senior center is there, I believe, that though, that might not be official. We are now coming to you as seniors, and we're saying to you, help us, do, help us, or allow us to help ourselves with the cooperation of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is there anything, anybody, Glenn? So if there's, if there's any questions that you have for me, I'd be happy to answer them, or from anybody else, but now's the time. Sure, David?
Yeah, Mr. Patzios, so thank you for.
David, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Doug. So Charlie, thank you for, you know, for having this, having this joint meeting with us, and really bringing this to our attention. You know, housing is, is certainly important. We are in crisis. You know, one of the, one of the questions that I've had, and we've had conversations, you know, for the last year, year and a half, really about a feasibility study, about a redevelopment of the Swamp Scott Housing Authority. So I know you had, I know you had mentioned that you had Ed Augustus that had, that had come to visit you. I know you've had conversations with people from the state. Can you give us an update as to where that stands with feasibility, from a feasibility study perspective?
Sure.
It's my understanding that you need that before anything else can.
Sure, so we've put in for that, the state has acknowledged that we need to do that, and they're, they're providing that assistance. When we originally gone to them and had put in our application for the, their matching funding, if you will, at that time, we had $50,000 that had been allocated to us by the select board. The only way the state agencies that can operate is we have to follow the procedure that the state has us follow. And so when they looked at that, did you wanna?
I was gonna add into that. So that study was for the Lally's Garage property, which we were looking into. We actually, me and Charlie had a meeting for that front, remember?
Yep.
What did the state say?
So the state said, because the property is not owned by the town of Swamp Scott, it cannot provide us any funding in construction. The property must be owned by the town of Swamp Scott, and if the town owns it, and it allows the Housing Authority to come in, it will fund us at a level that they will determine once everything is in. Now, why is, why can't I tell you the exact amount of funding? Remember I mentioned to you earlier that there's a score that the buildings have? The worse the score, the more the money. We're in a position right now, because our scores are terrible, to get the most funding. Right now, the money's available, the property isn't. So, all I can tell you is, there's, there's something here, but there's nothing here. There's nothing until the school department does what it needs to, when, when the school department needs help, where does it go to? It goes to all of us. It goes to all of us. I'm, 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 I am stepping into that role and saying, we need help. We've never asked for it before. We desperately need it.
So I have a, a kind of actuary table. These are all the prices that we pay for vouchers throughout the whole state.
Speak.
I'm going to speak into the microphone. So throughout the whole state. Now, if you look at it, it's by zip. And you look at it, Swamp Scott has the highest percentage of anywhere on the North Shore. They pay vouchers. That's how bad the housing crisis is in Swamp Scott. You don't have enough affordable stock. Now, now you're going to have the Westcott coming online. There's a few other projects. And that's going to bring it down, but it's not going to be at the percentage the state really wants, which is, I think, like eight percent, if I remember.
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yeah.
You know, right now, the average for a voucher, and this isn't a HUD voucher, this is the state voucher, which is a little bit different. It's a twenty-eight hundred a month that we would pay someone to live in an apartment in Swamp Scott. You go over to Nahut, it's twenty-three hundred. You go over to Marblehead, it's twenty-four hundred. Go over to Lynn, twenty-three hundred. So that just, see, it shows you kind of the level of problems that there are in the community with the, with the affordable housing stock that's available right now.
Kevin, I, I don't know about others, I didn't quite follow that. Like, why, I get that ours is higher, but would it? Who's paying that to who and why does that?
It's based off of how much housing stock is available. Either market rate or whatever, doesn't matter. That's what they base those voucher prices on.
But Kevin, I think that you should pause the way you worded it. So the state, the state pays the Swamp Scott Housing Authority to pay the government.
Well, no, no, this is, okay, these are MRVP vouchers. So there's different types of vouchers that the state has. There's Section Eight vouchers, there's, uh, which is run by the federal government. That's a set price for the Boston community. So what Massachusetts has done with its voucher program has set different pricings for different towns based off of ZIP code. And if you look at it, Swamp Scott has one of the highest percentages that a housing authority that has these vouchers, MRVP, which we have a few. We do have a few vouchers that are in Swamp Scott that will actually pay, so.
Okay.
It's just not down with the situation.
Yeah, I get it. Can you go, Charlie, I know you've, we've had, you know, a conversation about this a little bit before. And it feels like in some ways, with what you just said here, I'm not sure if you tied everything together the way I understood it before. Maybe you've thought things through differently. But just to state it back to you, if I'm understanding, your hope is that the schools would release the Clark School to the town. That's fundamental to getting the state to engage. Because the town has, the town has to own the land. Unlike Lally's, unlike the school district. The town has to own this.
Has that possession?
Has that possession. In order to get that very rich backing, seventy, eighty percent, whatever it is, based on the condition of the housing, you're hoping to use the Clark School potentially to move the senior center there. That's maybe an added bonus because you're thinking this would be senior housing, senior public housing, or public housing in general. Lay out this scheme here and then how does that relate to the conditions of the buildings that we have? Is this kind of?
So they're all, they're all connected, but they're independent of each other at the same time. So when it comes to your reimbursement rates, the, the worse your score, the more your funding.
Right.
Okay. When it comes to, what was your other question? I'm sorry.
Well, first, first of all, are you talking about this being senior housing?
So.
Or is it public housing in general?
So it's housing in general. Are we, you know, specifically, specifically exactly the type of housing? To be determined.
Okay.
But there's one other thing that I wanted to mention to you. Out of the fifty states in the United States, forty-seven of them are on federal housing. Three of them are still on state housing. Obviously, Massachusetts is one of those three states. Our reimbursement rate by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on average, what, six?
It's about three hundred dollars a month.
Per, per unit. Whereas if we're on the HUD system, we're over two thousand dollars a unit per month on reimbursement from the federal government. Why aren't we, can we go on the federal system? Yes. But we have to meet the minimum standards of the federal system in order to qualify to do that. So if the Clark School were to be developed, we would be reimbursed on a federal level, not on a state level, because we meet that criteria, the quality and the conditions of the building. Can you have, the next question, I came, well, can we still be on the state system for some of our properties? On Nahut or the other? Answer is yes. So we can transition off the state onto HUD, onto the federal system for a much higher reimbursement rate, which allows us to maintain our buildings and to grow our housing stock. Our goal at the housing authority, or more importantly, the Swamp Scott Housing Development Corporation, is Swamp Scott. There are no other communities we're interested in. We're interested in doing the best job for us here. Now, does that mean that we act in isolation and that it's only public housing with nothing else? No. We can create a blend of that. But not wanting to get too far ahead of myself and wanting to keep the focus on our next one or two steps, we can't do anything unless the town of Swamp Scott, the select board, has control of that property. At which point, we go to the state with our housing study and everything else that they want us to do. And we ask the procedure they want us to follow. Because each situation is unique.
So let me be clear. So you're asking, so the first step we need to do is the select board needs to talk to the school committee, right, or the school department, to see if they will release Clark back to us. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, and then at that point, we have to then have a discussion, a community-wide discussion probably, to allocate that particular building for housing, right?
Yes.
So these, I'm just trying to understand what the ask is.
And while that's happening, it doesn't mean it's going to happen in one year or in sixteen months or in eighteen months. It might happen, it might take us thirty-six months. I don't know how long the process is. We've never done it before. Does that mean that while we have possession of the building, because it'd be given to us, it will say, no, high school? No, middle school? No, elementary school? You can't use the building? We never say that. We are in cooperation. We want to come here. We're not interested in acting alone. We're interested in having all hands on deck. We want this to be a true effort of the town of Swamp Scott. I believe that in-town meeting, when we all get together, there isn't a single person that doesn't want the greater good of the community. But at that very moment, we're voting on individual warrant articles, there are people that want it and people that don't want it. And if you want a different article and the money's not there, you want that article to fail. It's as simple as that. This is the one time where we need to act unified. We need to look at this and say, our seniors need housing. They need to be able to afford the housing. If we're being reimbursed by the federal government, which is the plan for the Clark, my plan for the Clark, our plan for the Clark, that will free up housing that other people are living in right now that they're hanging on to. Because not all the housing will be at, um, public housing rates. We can, we can start to mix in housing, which is what the plan has always been, which is what the Westcott is and others are. We are not acting alone.
So.
No, go ahead.
So normally, for like a boots-on-the-ground planning, doing all the studies, doing all the infrastructure, getting everyone together, usually takes about four years before we actually put the shovel to the ground for more state, state projects of this scale. So, you know, obviously, the school could be used for middle school. It could be leased out. It could be done for a myriad of different things. It's going to take a while before we.
So, so my next question is, not to put you on the hot seat, man. You're aware of this. Does the school have a response to that? Or are they at all, through you, like, prepared to even start a conversation about it?
I, I don't think, I don't think they are. I don't think that.
Your position is that the schools want to maintain control of that building? Or their position through you?
Yeah, as of right now, I don't think that the most people in the leadership in the school department are, are aware of this.
Even privy to this, okay.
Yeah, so I think.
So it sounds like there needs to be a lot of conversation that hasn't happened yet, right? To at least begin having, you know, an exchange of ideas to figure out where everybody is on this.
That's the point of this tonight.
Right.
To kick that off.
Right.
Exactly.
How do we do that?
Yeah.
Question.
I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Actually, it might be for you. Well, first, let me just ask, how many units are there at Duncan Terrace and how many units are there at Dority Circle?
So Dority Circle has forty-four units. And Duncan Terrace has forty-two.
Forty-two? So I think maybe you can answer. If we are building new units, if we're getting affordable housing in different properties, like, like we're going to have in Vinin Square, how many, are we getting sixteen units over there?
Yeah, I think so.
Are we, is, are we able to move, move people over from Duncan into affordable units over there? Does that cross at all?
Mary Ellen.
Public housing versus.
Mary Ellen.
Yeah.
I think it's going to depend on their financing. Because if, if they've got tax credits at all involved, then you have to sign a one-year lease and you have to move permanently. But if it's not, and there's no, like, I can look at their financing if you want and give you.
So the reason I'm asking this question is I'm just wondering if we have a number of different structures at Duncan Terrace, for example, and we're able to move, say, sixteen units, sixteen people into another facility and then rebuild, rebuild over onto that property? Is that, that might sound really crazy, but.
No, but, no, that's what we've done, I've done my whole life.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's absolutely doable.
But the problem too is, where's the financing coming from?
Well, we gotta, we've gotta work it all out. But she's just trying to help us come up with this.
I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we can get, if we, because we do have new housing coming onboard. We also have Pine Street. Any, you know, if you have any veterans in housing over there, can we also have veterans applying for Pine Street?
We, we could, but at the end of the day, all we're doing is we're taking out someone from a building. We're repairing, rebuilding that same unit. And we're putting that, so the unit count.
So we're not increasing any?
We're not increasing.
Right.
We're not increasing.
Well, but if you take down the building and you put up, you know,
A bigger building.
Three-story instead of a two-story.
And so you're, you're right. And then the, the discussion has always been from the tenant's side, which is a fear factor. And I can understand it. Here's what that is. You're telling me I have to move out of my house. I don't know where I'm going to live. And then you're telling me I can come back. Where have I heard this before?
Right.
And how, and how much can I believe? And when's it going to be done? And where are you going to move me to? And the answer is, we don't know. Now, I agree with you, Mary Ellen, a hundred percent, that there can be a way to do this. And if we're only looking at replacing the existing building, and maybe greater density, maybe taller buildings. The town owns a small playground that's outside Duncan. And could we put the first building at Duncan? A four-story building, parking underneath it, an elevator? We could take the next three buildings down? Yes, we can do that. But it's a far more complex process. And at the same time, at the end of the day, let's pretend that three years have gone by or five years have gone by. The school has rebuilt the middle school. They got it done real cheap. They're out, they're done. Everybody's happy. What happens to the Clark? Do they keep it? So if this isn't something that's going to happen in a year, it's going to happen in five years. The discussion is literally the same. What does the town want to happen with that property? Now, you've got the playground and you've got that other spaces. There's a playground and then there's the school property. And they're indistinguishable unless you look at a fence line. I think that there could be a bigger playground. There could be more open space. It could be a blend of a lot of things that are going on there. That existing building is a very well-built structure that's in decent condition structurally. And has a wooden roof. That wooden roof has to be replaced every so many years. Rather than replacing an A-frame roof, you go up two stories and now you have a flat roof. Literally, the existing, the existing height of the building, I would almost not change and be able to add a floor with a flat roof.
So, I mean, it's a lot of detail, obviously, where it's way down the road. But I think that, if I understand correctly, one of the most critical distinctions between trying to kind of rework the housing on the sites that you have right now, which are not town-owned, versus the Clark School, which would be town-owned, is the funding, amount of funding that's possible by using that, that approach?
Let me add, make one correction to what you said.
Okay.
The town does own the property that the school, that the public housing is on. It's under the state's control, but it's Swamp Scott property.
Okay, so the, the additional funding that you talked about, the seventy, eighty percent or whatever, based on the condition of the building, is that available to us if you rework the buildings on the current site? Or is that uniquely available if you use the Clark School?
Is, I know it's available for the Clark. I'm going to say without certainty that it's probably available for redevelopment of that. But the cost of redoing the, the Clark School and the way that that building's laid out is perfect for housing. And it can be enlarged or added on to, structurally vertically, by going up another floor. It has that wing that's out the front. Is that your senior center? Is, maybe we create two floors there. All I'm trying to tell you is when I look at this site, there isn't one possibility. There are several possibilities. There are several possibilities. It allows space to be cre- why is this so important? Because it allows us to move the senior center out of the current high school and allow that space to be used by either the adminis- the administration is now in the middle school. We know that that building is way too tight. If you gave it, I think it's in, it's eight rooms, eight classrooms that offices are in approximately, the first floor to the left, uh, um, that you walk by as you're going into the front doors, that's all administrative space, or at least I remember it that way. So, all that can now be returned to the school. We can take that senior center and put it inside the Clark. Now it's servicing the people that are actually right there. Rather than having to bring them to them, they're right there. Efficiency is great, transportation costs go down, it's a much more efficient process. And the other thing that we do, and I, I can't speak to this because I don't know if we're rehabbing or we're tearing down and building new, but we can be funded by the federal government, by HUD, at a much higher rate than what the state's reimbursing us at. A much higher rate. And so, if we build, if we build there, the outcomes are predictable. I don't know enough about tearing down and rebuilding at Duncan or Doherty. It's possible, but the discussion needs to happen outside the confines of our, uh, meeting room at, at the Housing Authority. It needs to be at the town level.
Well, Charlie, thank you, and the Housing Authority, uh, I'm not cutting this off, but I mean, thank you very much, uh, for raising this possibility. Very intriguing, a little complicated, obviously. Um, and I think, you know, I think as Mary Ellen said to begin with, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities for the Clark. You know, this, I think, this discussion, for me at least, puts this amongst the possibilities. Um, and I think it is really critical to understand the financing piece and how unique it is to be able to use the Clark versus existing locations that you have. So that's part of the discussion.
I, I don't need to speak to you about this. You, you know it better than maybe anybody else. CPA is, is in line to help us here, to create housing.
Yeah, and there's probably twenty-seven things that probably want the CPA's money. It has, doesn't even have a drop, a dime yet, but...
Yes, yeah, all, all true, but to be prepared to act when the, when the moment is right has eluded us in this town for many years. And I'll just go back and just take the Band-Aid off and just point out that when we had money to do our own treatment facility, we chose not to do it, and it cost us millions of dollars later to hook up in Delin. When the money was available for us to add on to the Clark, we said no. We wound up buying the mobile trailers and adding, and paying for that ourselves. When we could have gone to the DCR or the MDC at the time and incorporate the beach, we said no. But this board is different than what's happened in the past. You're proactive. And so I'm, I'm pleading to you, don't stop doing what you've been doing. Don't rest. You need less sleep, more work. So, I encourage you to, to hear our cry and to know that, um, the seniors need help. We've, we've not, we've only been, we've only been addressed, and I say this with my hat in my hand, somewhat, somewhat embarrassed, because the time that we were voted, we voted for the high school was because we got a, because the only way we could get the votes to build it was a senior center. That's what we got out of it. That's in the past. What's in the future now is redemption. And to do something that is transformative in this town, and we can do it there. And again, it's not to the exclusion of rec, it's not to the exclusion of an early, uh, kid, you know, pre-kindergarten, it's not to the exclusion of maybe extended day there. It's not to the exclusion of anything. We want to have it be all-encompassing. At the same time, we just need a piece of that for housing. And we have the funding for it. Something that we know can be difficult at times, as we've experienced recently. So, I just, I'm sounding like a broken record. Right now is the time. I need your help. I appreciate. And by the way, Gino, this is the longest job interview I've ever seen anybody be on.
I don't know what other board members feel like. I mean, I think we need to digest this and, um, we need, we're gonna need to think about the...
It's a community conversation.
The process that we go through on this. Not that we don't have many other processes, uh, going on, but, you know, whether it's the housing, whether it's the Community Life Center, whether it's the holding it on to it for the school, I think those are the three biggest possibilities. Um, there's a lot of different parties involved, especially in this idea.
I, I think it's really good that Charlie has, you know, brought this up and brought attention to this. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks.
Oh, I should say the Housing Authority, not Charlie.
Any other specific thoughts from the board about next steps? Because, uh, like, where it sits right now is Max and company are proceeding towards an RFR. To, to me, David, actually, what this comes back to is that I think that's a little bit, you know, I don't know if we're in a position to say, but I think that's slightly premature. Um, I think there should be some more conversation, because an RFR has, has a, has a focus to it, as you said, Max, right? It's got a little bit more of a clear destination to it. And, you know, you've got a framework, which is, for the next three years, we're gonna be using it as some temporary usage. It feels to me like we should have a little bit more of some informal conversations first, or an RFI, to solicit inform, you know, ideas from people before we're launching down to an RFR.
And, and we may, we may also wanna look at our capital plan and, and, and try to figure out...
And our master plan.
And our master plan, more specifically, what the, what the needs are, and then when, realistically, we are going to either rebuild or...
Right.
Renovate the, uh, the middle school. I know, I, I know it's there, but I know, but I know there are a number, there are a number of things that are, uh...
You mean, what, five years, ten years? I mean, we've thrown out a lot of numbers, so...
Yeah.
All of that is part of the discussion. And it, part of it, a lot of it is part of this financial summit that we didn't have, right? Because a lot of these pieces are relatable, right? It's a bigger discussion.
It's true. Some people would wanna make high-end condos there instead.
Sure.
Right, so...
Sure, yeah. Or the Community Life Center, so...
Feel free to give feedback about, you know, what that...
Maybe we need to have another joint meeting with the school committee and really, like, start the discussion, right? And, and collaborate more.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the reason we wanted to get in front of the school committee and the select board was to, you know, if we're gonna advance this, to understand if, if there's support and, and what might that process look like or how you might wanna shape it. So, um, you know, interesting timing to kind of have this, the housing discussion. And, um, I don't think that all of these ideas need to be looked at as competing with one another. I mean, you talk about the timelines for some of these housing projects, they, they can be long-term. You know, the hu- the timeline for the middle school project could be long-term. I mean, I think it's complicated. Um, I think all I would say is, while all those things are, are gonna take a long time to play out, in the meantime, we're gonna have a vacant building that's gonna be sitting there. So, um, I think that's why we're kind of in front of you saying, let's do something relatively soon to try and get this building filled up, generating income instead of costing us money. Uh, so, you know, I think all these con- conversations can be happening simultaneously, but I just don't wanna see the, the complexity of it all kind of stifle us and have us just end up with this building just sitting there as a liability for everyone.
Which makes sense, because if they're looking for an initial lease term of three years, none of this is happening in three years.
But if I heard Charlie write, they, the town needs to have control, or whatever the exact word was he said, in order to actually start their process, right? So...
Right.
You know, maybe the, maybe the two, to your point, Max, aren't in conflict. Um, could you, could the control be moved to the town, uh, if that's, you know, amenable to the schools?
Right.
Uh, which is a little bit different than just us signing off on it, I, I think. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. So the town has control, theoretically, this process could be looked into more, not necessarily actually go down this housing path, but at least look into it more, because the town has control. And then that becomes more, you get more detail on what the possibilities are there. In the meantime, we're still leasing it out to someone, so it's not sitting empty and we're getting income while that's happening. So it's just a slight move to move it over to the town side, if that's a critical component to figuring this out.
And I believe...
Understanding too, that if we do that, and we assume it does go over to the town side, then we're responsible for...
Right.
You know, if that doesn't get, if that building doesn't get leased or rented, we're, you know, we're putting that on our operating budget.
Yeah. Maybe the state will pay for it, according to Charlie.
Yeah, right.
In the meantime.
Right.
No, but this, but we did, we did do something similar where there was control that was shifted from the school to the town when we issued the RFP for the, for the Hadley School, I, I do believe.
Hadley is, is that under the control of the town?
No, understood, but to, but when we issued the RFP, I think there was a, there was a, there's been, there's been a transfer of control. I believe we put a deed restriction on that, on that property to ensure that there was not, uh, market-rate housing. We took that option off the table. So, there has been collaboration between the, between the school department and the, and the town, uh, for buildings that were, that are under school control. So, this wouldn't be completely unprecedented. This would be something, this would be another instance of us working together, uh, to solve a common, a common problem and work towards a common solution. My dear.
So, looking back at your memo, first thing that pops out at me is, given the school department's desire to retain control of the Clark Building, so...
Is there room for collaboration?
There's a nub right there, right, that we need to resolve. You know, how important is that? Is that, you know, can we be, you know, moved permanently, temporarily, and still meet, you know, uh, the longer-term potential needs of the school district? Seems like that's part of the conversation that needs to happen in the short run. Ideally, I think from, I'll say my own, I don't know if it's the, the select board in general's perspective, we'll have to kind of resolve that a little bit, what the options are, uh, before going down a pipe of the RFR.
Yeah, you know, and really at the core of all this, and it hasn't been spoken a lot about, it's been referenced, is the middle school, right? And, and what's gonna happen with the middle school? We know, like, there's the window project, which is gonna be advancing, uh, with design soon, but there's some real challenges at the middle school that are, that are hard for the town to solve. Um, I don't think we're really in a position financially to deal with the middle school like it needs to be dealt with, uh, because we've just built a hundred-million-dollar school. But that doesn't change the fact that we have systems at the middle school, HVAC and electrical, and, and accessibility issues that are massive. Um, and we just need, we need to, we just need to be honest with that and, and start strategizing that. And, you know, my, my opinion is that we need to be looking at, um, a statement of interest to get the ball rolling, so we're, we're looking at the different options. I, I really do hope that, um, you know, early twenty-six, we are, we're looking at a, the statement of interest. Um, while, while it's challenging, we, we just need to kind of face it head-on and start to figure out what's gonna happen with the middle school, 'cause that, that chip changes all of this other, all these other things. If the middle school's not gonna happen, that changes everything.
And just to be clear, when you say statement of interest...
To MSBA.
Through MSBA, right.
And that's a long process. Okay. More conversations to be had.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Next item, second reading, discussion and possible vote to approve standalone policies recommended by Human Resources, KP Law and/or the Risk Control Insurance Company on electronic communications and computer usage, drug and alcohol-free workplace, and motor vehicle record, ADA policy, ADA grievance policy, and the updated employee handbook. Gino, do you wanna say anything about this, or Mary Ann, or...
I'd like to turn it over to Mary Ann.
So we first went through this, I think it was March twenty-sixth. Um, there are the standalone policies that we're looking for approval on, um, and then the handbook itself, which I don't expect that all to happen today.
Were there any other, were there any major changes from the last reading?
No. So, you guys did ask for information from me on, um, you wanted to do a comparison on our vacation days and our sick days and our personal days, 'cause they seemed a little excessive. I did the super peer. I sent it to you all on April second with the spreadsheet of the comparison next to all of the different towns. And then we just haven't spoken since.
Danielle, do you have any comments on that?
Oh, I have a lot of comments, Doug. Do you have a lot of time? Um, do you wanna go through the...
The night is young.
Standalone policies first?
Yeah, sure.
The, the, I mean, this stuff is all, the ADA, drug and alcohol, this is all, this has been vetted by KP Law, I assume.
Yes.
None of that, no, nothing there stood out to me. That's, I'm looking more at the handbook, so...
Okay, so, are there any comments on any of the other policies besides the handbook? Do you all wanna...
I have one I wanna raise.
Great.
So it was sort of handed to me to be the ADA coordinator, 'cause Pete used to have it. I don't know if I necessarily should be. It's not uncommon for HR too, but it can also go to the building commissioner or someone in community development. So I kinda wanted you to weigh in on that. I'm listed right now, but it can be anybody.
So are you also the harassment contact, are you that person as well, like title, any of that?
For employees?
Yes. So, yeah. I mean, my natural inclination is that same person unfortunately is tagged with all of them. If you're one, then you're out of the go-to for all, but I can certainly understand, um, your hesitation there. ADA is very specific, and it isn't just employment, right, so...
Should ADA be the building, the building inspector? Is, it seems like it's just...
I think with Rich, in his capacity, probably, he would fit the bill with his wealth of experience. Not all building inspectors typically have that same caliber of resume that he does.
And I, I did take, there was a free online training, so I took it, but it seems like it would be he, him that I would be going to anytime something came up anyway, so...
You're talking about for the, like, the ADA grievance procedure?
Yeah, if someone's complaining about a sidewalk...
We have to have one, we have to have one person identified as the ADA coordinator.
Coordinator.
That's a good point. Gino, have you had any conversations with him about, have you had any conversations with him about it? That probably is the first step, right?
Yep, exactly. Yeah, I have not had any conversations with Rich.
We didn't have anybody listed, so I ended up being listed because we needed to have someone listed.
Like default, yeah. I mean, it, you know, you're talking about potentially having to modify buildings, you're, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. It's not just a human resources component, so. It really is probably, out of all the individual notices, it's the least human resources-related, right? You might even have, like, a town administrator that is the, you know, coordinator. You could even have that.
Yep, that is also common.
Mm-hmm.
Although I have to say, like, the beginning of this grievance procedure may be used by anyone who wishes to file a complaint alleging discrimination on the basis of disability in employment practices and policies, or the provision of services, activities, programs, and benefits of the town.
Mm-hmm.
That, that sounds pretty far outside the purview of the building commissioner.
Um, well, if you think about the ways that people with disabilities would bring a suit, right, it would be accessibility, right, to buildings, elevator access, um, things of that nature. But hiring certainly, of course, is a component of it as well.
Maybe we should have co-coordinators?
Yeah. I mean, it can be shared. If there's an employee that temporarily needs an accommodation because of, like, a injury or something, they would go to Human Resources for that.
So would that make sense to have co-coordinators?
Not really.
No?
To be honest, it's usually one person.
That, that to me is something that needs a little bit more discussion, right? I think you have to...
Okay.
You might even want to wait for a permanent TA to decide something like that, right? That might be something that's a bigger conversation, just because of the liability associated with this type of, um, act.
Who is serving that now?
I think it's Mary Ann.
My instinct is to roll with it as it is.
Yeah.
Basically, you can, we can always come back and revote this if someone really cares about switching it, but...
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yep. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the other one I just noticed that's, uh, not all the way filled in is on the electronic communications. There's a spot here for, insert title of appropriate official on page four.
Yep. So this is a new one, is it?
Yeah, we don't currently, well, we have some old electronic communications policies that are very outdated, 'cause they speak to old electronic devices, like dial-up and things like that.
Without permission from the town administrator?
Yeah, I mean, that's just up to you to decide.
Well, sometimes too, it's like the director of IT, which we don't have. So that's usually, you know, a person that you would have potentially there, but we don't have one of those.
Town administrator or his designee.
Right, you could do that as well, yeah.
Yeah, I would just say town administrator.
Yeah.
Okay, with those, do you all wanna take a vote on those, or do you wanna move on to discussion of the...
What about the motor vehicle records? What is that?
Recommended by our risk management, our, our company that we use, and they, they said we could use their policy and legal, that it was better to stay with.
But we didn't have one before?
Not really.
Oh, God.
I think Gino has one for DPW.
Right.
Yeah.
But we have more than DPW using vehicles, right?
Right.
So, we have to have one. I'm surprised we didn't. Okay. That one is, looks like it's fairly well-defined by travelers. I think we can really mess with that too much. Okay, so do we wanna make a motion to approve the standalone policies?
I'll take one.
I will make a motion to adopt the, let's see, what are we calling them here in the... Standalone policies recommended by Human Resources, KP Law, and/or the Risk Control Insurance Company, to include electronic communication and computer use, drug and alcohol-free workplace, and motor vehicle record, ADA policy, ADA grievance policy. And I'll stop there, because we wanna talk about the handbook.
I'll second that.
As filled in as our, for our discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now on to the handbook.
So besides the comp, nothing else major since the last reading?
Not, I haven't changed a thing, because I was actually waiting for your input from my April second email. David had asked for, uh, the original policy, so I sent that to you, and then, uh, the current policy, I should say. And then you wanted a Word document of this policy, so you could make edits and a comparison side-by-side of vacation time. I sent, it looks like this, with all the super peer at towns.
And did you get a whole host of edits back from us?
None.
None.
Okay, so, let's see.
Do you wanna just, uh, either you or Danielle, I don't know if the, 'cause I don't have that comparison in front of me. Uh, did that raise up any red flags for you, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Or Danielle? Have you had a discussion? Is there...
So I was zoning in primarily, and to the, to the point that we had this discussion earlier about the utilization of sick time when someone is retiring, um, I felt like we needed to really focus on what we were giving people and the policies surrounding it. So, if you wanna start with the vacation policies on twenty-nine, that's where I went. The holiday page seemed fine to me. I didn't see anything wrong with it.
Which page was it there?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, so the very beginning starts, you know, six-month probationary period before they can utilize vacation time. All of that made sense to me. Once, where I started to have issues, and I've said this before...
Once, where I started to have issues, and I've said this before, where we're getting into differences in terms of grading of employment positions. That's not normally the case, right? We don't normally, well, you know, we also don't include here what position is included in which grade. So in most municipalities, they give you, you know, up to five years of service, you get 10 days. Up to 10 years of service, you get 15 days. Here, we're breaking it out based on what their positions are. That's not a common practice. So that was my first concern.
And is that, was that borne out, Mary Ann, with what you found too?
Yeah, there, well, one of the things even KP recommended was, as of year 15, that could get us into trouble with collective bargaining, because it's way earlier than it is for them, so. That extra fifth week was recommended to be kicked into 20.
KP Law recommended not doing that until 20th year?
Yeah, I'm going to find the exact notes I had on that one.
But what about just the fundamental thing Danielle's bringing up, just the fact that it's by grade, and there's, there's a distinction by grade, is that common, did you find, or?
I didn't find it to be common on the comps that we, that you said.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was broken out in other policies, like what the different grades were, but in some, it was very generically just the same across the board.
But I would say that, from my experience of looking at your comps, the majority of towns listed, they go by length of service.
Period.
Period. So that was my first concern.
And that, that could be easy if, quote, easy if everyone's getting lifted up?
Sure, right, if you try to go the other way, right, you have, there's more, you know, I mean, would we really, considering we're proposing a change to a handbook that probably hasn't seen changes like this in quite some time, I would err on the other side of generosity in this respect, right? Because I do have other things that I would propose that would go the other way.
Well, and any changes that we make, anybody who's already been hired in would be grandfathered in. But another little asterisk to this comparison is, they did say, obviously, when someone's negotiating, coming on board, they can negotiate more vacation time, it's common practice. If someone's getting hired in a department head position, they may say, "I'll come, but I need X amount of weeks of vacation," and that's a conversation between the town administrator-
And so, to that, I would say that it's standard practice for them to ask, but it shouldn't be standard practice for us to accommodate.
Correct.
Right, so people can always ask, they'll ask you for the moon and the stars, but from a perspective of what Swampscot would consider standard practice, I don't, I think it, we should not be giving anybody that level of control to negotiate that, anything outside of the handbook. That's my personal thought.
So what, what is, what is the, is there a, a common practice? Does everyone get three weeks out of the, out of the chute, or is it two, or?
No, depending on the different levels.
So I think the average for years one through five is two weeks. And here, I mean, I think we've got for grades four, four, four through six, which, again, I don't even know what that is. We're starting them with three weeks, so we could, if we wanted to, start everybody at three weeks, right? Instead of the, but though I do think the standard is two weeks.
So if we have a department head, is a department head a grade one, a grade two, a grade four?
Exactly.
I did edit originally, a document that I believe was in the April 2nd with the right who fell under each level.
Which is for, for a town hall of this size, so small, to have them broken out by that is very rare.
I think it's actually sold out in the old policy too. But it is department heads that are in a higher level.
Of course.
They start out with three weeks.
Of course, I mean, they, you know.
Five to five and six.
So do we actually have department heads make requests for vacations in advance?
It's common practice in private sector, so depending on the person's background, if they're coming over from another municipality and may already have a certain amount of vacation time, or whatever the case may be, it is common language in a negotiation when offering a job to someone or discussing offering a job, that that'll come up.
I mean, that should be the standard, that it is requested in advance, but of course, there are exceptions to the rule. New employee coming in, I have a vacation booked, is that okay? So that's, that was my first issue, and then sick time, sick time. So I think that we absolutely have to have a provision in here.
Danielle, do you mind if we just, just-
Oh, you want sick vacation?
Kind of settle it in a way, I mean, we can just kind of draft, settle it, just so we're, so. I'm, I'm a little stunned, but you're saying if someone's already employed here, their forever, their entire employment forever is governed by what was in place when they started?
Usually.
We can have them grandfathered, right? You can grandfather employees, you don't have to.
Okay.
It's not required.
I would defer to legal counsel, just to make sure.
Yeah.
Because I would think that there would be a provision in people's offer letter, whatever, according to the standard HR policies at the time, or whatever, right? So Danielle, you're kind of suggesting, Mary Ann, to go to three across the board, you know, it's-
Yep.
And ma- make it basically consistent with the employees in grades four through six? Use that framework for everybody?
Use the four through six for all, yes. And I'm saying not to break them out through grade. To just have vacation time, zero to five years, 15 days. And start from there.
So I think even just that makes, leads me to say, we're probably not really actually voting on this tonight?
No.
It's going to have to be something-
Oh, God, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Didn't expect.
Absolutely.
No, but the fact that we're not voting on it is fine, but can we not, can we not have a, can we not have 90 days go by?
Right.
Between meetings, I mean, this is just a, this is a lot of time, I know we have a lot of stuff going on, but I do think that if this is on our next agenda, that we can, that we can work through this. And it's fresh.
Right. That would be my suggestion, of course, yeah.
I just think we're going to have to run these things back through town council, what the ramifications are, I think, just think about it a little while, like, you know. I know Max and Patrick are sitting here going, like, "This is awesome," you know, "Our vacation's going up," maybe, I don't know.
You say that right now, you might change your mind, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Just add, most of the department heads have contracts right now anyways, and their vacation time is in the contract.
So the grandfather provision-
Not about the department heads, Gino, there's other people too. So sick time?
Sick time. Okay. So standard stuff, based on hours, how much you accrue. I, I'm not really understanding why there is two methods for accrual. Alternate method one, alternate accrual method two, I mean. I wonder where that-
Which page are you on?
We're 31.
31.
I don't know the historical piece of that, or when that would have changed, or why two came into play.
I don't, I don't know, that was like an example that was added into it. It can come out.
It, it doesn't need to, but it's, it's okay. In the part on page 32, use of sick time, it doesn't define how many days successively that someone has to be out before you require a sick note, so usually it's five business days.
Yep.
Right, it says you give them seven working days to provide the note, but it doesn't say, that's the spot where it should say, if you're out five days or more, you know, you're required to provide, you may be required to provide a doctor's note.
Do you have a specific line there, Danielle, that you're looking to change?
Well, it's missing, so it's-
Missing, just missing, okay.
It speaks to, you know, taking off the day before, calling in sick day before or after a holiday, but it doesn't really say, you know, if you're out five days in a row, we may require a doctor's note, right?
Yeah, we can take that language out of the DPW contract, I know it's in there.
Right, I'm sure it's in all, right.
So MD note may be required if sick for more than five days, something like that.
And then you have sick time provided to allow employees two with one, two, and three. I assume that that wording has been vetted with, you know, paid family leave and all of the requirements in Massachusetts now, right?
Yep.
Okay, so end of sick leave, this is my biggest, my biggest issue here. So this basically enables every single town employee to have what's called sick leave buyback in their contract. That is costly, and that is not standard, right? It, it could certainly, you know, we put a cap of $8,500 a person, but it is not standard for every single employee to be given sick leave buyback. That's often negotiated in union contracts, right? That's always a provision in there, that, you know, is a give and take, right? A lot of people on administration side will try to get that out of any union contract, because it's so expensive. But this is also the place where we have to consider putting something in that prevents people from calling in sick for 50 days before they retire, or before they leave employment, right? That is, to me, crucial.
Right, because what I've-
It speaks to what we're, our budget in terms of what we're, do you understand, like, the connection there is huge.
The way we put it in, as the buyback, I've had employees, DPW, mind you, saying, "Wait a minute, I'm not trying to use these, because this comes out to way more than the $8,500."
Sure, I'm sure they do. And those are union employees, so they're in a whole separate situation, right? Because they're covered by CBA, this is really just speaking to everybody else that's not covered by a CBA. It's just not really commonplace for people that are not CBA employees to have sick leave buyback. It's, it's very much a bargaining chip, it always is, in any union, it's expensive.
Usually you just give up your sick time, you leave, for whatever reason, you give up your sick time, period, right?
Exactly, you get paid out on your vacation.
Only on retirement do you get the buyback.
Right.
Strictly on retirement.
We have to pay for any unused vacation time, that's the law, but sick leave, you, you don't, you lose it, right? Same with personal time.
Yeah, I think this $8,500 is a little bit of a red herring though, because if I'm understanding this correctly, you can only use up to 30 days, and you only get 20% of that.
No, they have to have at least 30 days accrued to even tap into it.
Ah, thank you, okay.
They can receive 20% of their total bank, up to a max of 85. Which is a hard number to reach. If they don't have 30 days, they're not even, it's not even an option for them.
You have to have been employed for as long as Gino to get to that.
I've used three sick days in 22 years, so I think I have 2,900 sick hours accrued.
Yeah, right.
Oh, so this might be a little relevant, this provision, I think so.
It might be, yeah.
Although your contract's different, right? So that's-
I don't think there's any mention in the contracts about, I think-
You know, they're accruing one day per month, right, so 12 days a year.
I think it's one and a quarter days per month.
I think it says on page 31, "Town shall accrue sick leave at the rate of one day per month for each month of full-time service."
That's interesting, okay, that would be a change from the policy. Right now, all town employees, right, in the town hall are getting one and a quarter.
Oh, then that's not, that's incorrect here then.
Yep. So you'd have to change it.
So it's one and a quarter?
Well, I pulled it actually out of the old policy and matched it, but it is accruing at one and a quarter, I think you're right.
Okay, so that's, that's 15 days a year then.
That's right.
So that's, that's not correct here.
Which is steep.
Okay, so that's an edit, that has to-
So one problem you have, though, you know, there, there are pros and cons on this. For, so you'll find employees just, you know, finding that they have to take their sick days, "You gotta take my sick days." I always like it where you, you say, here, here your, you get X amount of sick days, and at the end of the year, if you don't use your sick days, we turn around. No, I never, I never lose it, I buy it, I buy it out, but you cannot come to work sick. Like, if you've come to work sick, that's pretty serious.
That's very subjective, how do you define sick, right?
Yeah.
Right, you're right, because in the old DPW contract, there used to be a sick leave incentive.
Sick leave incentive, yeah.
And somebody would get-
It's typically so small that no one wants to even consider it.
Unless they get to, it was every six months. If you're at five months and 28 days, I've seen guys coming in a wheelchair, not really, but, you know what I'm saying? Because they don't want to lose the sick incentive.
Well, you know, if you're, if you look at your population and you find that people calling out sick is a hindrance to your budget, right? Then you would enact something, you would implement something like a sick leave incentive. If you find that people are calling in sick a lot, you're getting, you know, having to pay other people to fill the jobs, or whatever, then sick leave incentive makes sense, right? But you have to make it palatable enough that people want to take advantage.
Right, like, how do you, how do you punish a healthy, you know, somebody? I don't know, I guess, it's, it's, it's a, it's, the way I do it, you know, in a smaller business, if, I just, I consider it time off. It's your time, I don't care what you're doing with it, but if, if you don't, if you don't use it at the end of the year, I just comp it out. No, I don't lose, I pay-
You pay out sick time?
I pay out sick time.
The rules have changed quite a bit for sick time now too, because actually, I wanted to, I didn't say something I wanted to in the paragraph above the end of sick leave, you're now allowed to use it in ways you didn't used to be able to. So if you have a family member or somebody that is sick, you can take time off to care for that person and use your sick time for that. One of the recommendations was, there should be a cap on how much you can take during that time, because someone who also has a lot saved could be like, "I'm off for six months."
Well, that's where FMLA gets into play also, right? So if you have someone take, looking to take a significant block of time, you require doctor documentation, I mean, there's more of a-
But our FMLA is unpaid, so we don't participate.
Do we allow utilization of sick time though?
Yeah.
Well, the, the other thing is, it's a liability, as far as I'm concerned, it's a liability for that year. So it's really, should be on that year's budget, so, it, because what happens is if people aren't touching it, so if I go X amount of years without touching it, now you're going to pay me out at a much higher rate later on, even 20% or not, you'll pay me at a higher rate later on, and it was really a liability for multiple years previous, so. And we're not putting money away each year into a, into a town.
Typically municipalities have a spreadsheet where it's sick leave liability. So every year, the finance director or the town accountant processes what, if everyone were to quit tomorrow and has X number of days, what the potential liability would be to that town. So you always know what potential exposure you have. I don't think we have that.
We don't have that.
We should have that.
We've tried to have it for years, but we don't have it.
So if I'm following this right, and I feel like, in a way, we're kind of, you know, because you're an HR professional, we're getting into the weeds at a level that, I'm, it's way beyond me, but it feels like this end of sick leave provision is somewhat of a compromise, right? It's putting kind of a cap and a buffer, it's not, you're not paying all of it out, you're not paying none of it out. If you end up, you've got a lot saved up, well, basically, you've been a good employee, you've been coming to work, right? You haven't wasted a lot of sick time, so we want to reward you to some degree, but we're not going to pay it all out. So it, maybe it's already kind of finding that middle ground.
And you might keep it, maybe you keep it and you lower it a little, who knows, you know?
Or maybe there's a cap on it, you know, like, we're not going to pay Gino out for 2,900 hours, right?
I've always said, I just use it as an insurance policy anyways. I tell my guy, everyone says, "You're a fool not to use your sick time," and I've always said, "Listen, I go buy homeowner's insurance, I buy automobile insurance, and I hope I don't need either one of those every year. But in the case I ever do get sick, hopefully, knock on wood, I don't need it."
And all of this is part of a bigger benefits package, right? You have to think about how it all complements one another. So if you're going to be lean on sick time, or lean on vacation, and you're paying higher salary, higher basis, then you can under, you know, you could appreciate that exchange. But if you're not, right, so maybe you're a little bit more lenient on the vacation and the personal, like-
I don't know how many people have retired from the town of Swanton in the last 22 years I've been here. I think most people just leave to move on to other opportunities.
Right, that's the other question, is how many people really even use their-
Exactly, when they leave, you know, the last bunch of people left it, you know, that's the risk you're taking, because you're not retiring.
Good point.
So, where are we landing on this? I mean, I, I'd, I'd, I'd be interested to know whether anyone else has kind of a, a cap.
They do, they all, it's, they all, everybody has them.
That's the only thing I would, I would kind of, my very amateur knowledge in a way, like, add to that.
They have the same provision for a lot of theirs. So the school department has, depending on their collective bargaining agreements, some of their teachers have this provision. They outlawed it a long time ago, so now, new teachers coming in do not have sick leave buyback capability. They get some other benefit in lieu of that.
Some of the, but, so the teachers also have, though, I think they allow the unions to have like a sick pool, where they can throw some of their sick time in and let other people use it that might come down and not have enough sick time.
Absolutely.
But some of the towns that I did the comparison with also did like a maximum amount of days you could accumulate. They had like a cutoff.
It's almost always 20%. I've never seen a town give more than 20% of your available sick balance, right? That's a pretty standard number.
Right, I was saying cap, and the cap's already in there, it's $8,500, right?
Yep. So it was whether or not, keep it, or lower it, or whatever with it. And, I mean, we could probably run a report, I would imagine, that could show on average how many year, like, every year, like, for the past five years, how much in sick pay have we paid out to a non-union town employee?
I'm talking about one person a year or something.
Yeah, I mean, because they have to retire, don't forget. Last leave employment.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They have to actually retire.
I was trying to pick the lowest number, but I guess it could be lower than one, so.
So what are we doing with this, Doug?
Maybe we move on to personal time?
We're, we're leaving it as is unless Mary Ann comes back with something better.
I would suggest personal time. I would suggest personal time, we reduce to three days, five. Three days is the standard. That is what I notice.
We're currently giving five full days, so for a full-timer, it's a full week's pay, and it's not typical.
The purpose of personal leave is not-
Your experience in the comps was three.
Three. Three in the corporate world and three municipalities.
Three, with a majority.
Okay.
Have they, has KP Law looked at the comp time piece?
What, in what way?
The definition and how they can use it within the comp time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we went back and forth with that, we have a little forum. Comp time technically for exempt employees are, I mean, for salaried employees is not typical. It's a nice-to-have, and we sort of have it, have had it in place. We have a little forum that it basically, they, anyone can, we really utilize it for department heads more than anybody, because for the most part, it's the department head that's required to stick around for meetings. So it was kind of built in, so there wasn't a burnout. If you could flex your schedule in the week, you flex it with the forum, though, so there's a paper trail, and you have signatures signed off on it, the town administrator, HR, and your department head, if you're not it. And if you can't flex your time in that week, you could ask for some comp time to be used at a later date. Has to be used within thirty days, can't be more than a week's worth of comp time. And it's, again, to sort of stop the burnout. Some departments have way more meetings than others, will have them every single night, going, 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 and there's sort of a unspoken rule of it's expected to work an additional two hours in the week, so when you go past thirty-six hours, you can utilize the forum for flex time or comp time.
But an employee can request to not have comp time and get paid out on the time that they're required. Yeah, see, that's where they legally-
When you're salaried, no. I mean, this policy doesn't even need to exist for salaried employees, it's just sort of expected that if, you know, you gotta work more, you gotta work more. It's a nice-to-have.
Right, but it has to be clearly defined.
It's a perk.
Right, I, I, it's, yeah, it's one of those things. Comp time is, the way I've always thought about it, is, is not really, it's not frowned upon, but you can get yourself into trouble with it if it's not clearly defined, right? If your people are not using it within, say, the week, right, and that happens a lot. You accrue comp time this week, you don't use it that week, you carry it over, you keep a log. That type of stuff gets very difficult to manage, right? Because who's this log going to? Who's approving, who knows?
It's all electronic, it's in our time and attendance system, and I'm the one who adds it in, so I can see where people are, and I recently had to go to somebody and say, you're at your max, you can't bank anymore.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're doing it the right way, but it's just one of those policies that can get.
Well, is it approved beforehand, or do people just-
Say, I'm using-
Come in and say, hey, I happen to use comp time.
No, that's why we put the forum in, there was a little bit of an abuse system going on.
Oh, you're kidding.
Um, yeah, there was just a, no rhyme or reason to it, so we, Amy had had an old forum kicking around that we updated together and sent it all out to all the department heads. So now they, they bring it to me, like, you can look at your week and say, oh, look at all the meetings I have, because most of the time, they don't sneak up on you. So, I'm going to be working forty-four hours this week, and I'm so busy, I don't think I can flex it all this week, so I'm going to put in and ask for comp. They'll leave it sitting, I have a spot on my desk, and at the end of the week, they'll come update it and be like, oh, that meeting didn't last that long, or whatever, and they kind of update the forum. Then I bring them all to Gino at the end of the week, so that he's not getting bothered all day long by different forms to sign, and I have him look through them all, and he signs them then. Once he's approved them, I input the information. But every, it goes into every employee's file, so there's a paper trail.
But I would think comp time really makes sense for, especially for situations like our elections.
Yep.
And, you know, I would think that having them make it up the following week is a little bit tough, because there's a lot of hours that have to go into the elections, preparation for it, then there's a lot of hours that have to go into, um, closing out the elections, so I would, I would just think having comp time later, later in the season.
Then you get into the case of forgetting about it. Well, if it's logged- Bank it all up and use it all at one point.
If it's logged in, if it's logged in electronically and people are monitoring it.
Yeah.
I don't know, these-
It's logged in, it's easy to see. Every employee can log into themselves to see what they have.
In overtime.
All right, well, I mean, I know that we need to be careful, but we also need to be efficient with our time here, otherwise, Patrick's going to be asking for a lot of comp time.
Just so you know, personal, personal time-
Patrick's already counting his comp time.
Or Pat.
Or Pat, right?
Personal time is granted at the beginning of every year, so it, it drops into the bucket at the beginning of the calendar year. It's the way we've been doing it, so everybody's got their thirty-four hours for the year already for this year. So if we make a change, it would be starting next year.
Fiscal year twenty-seven.
Calendar year.
Calendar year, twenty-six.
So it's three personal days?
Great, is what we're switching it to.
Three personal days?
Yeah. All right, so, are we doing any of the comp time or not?
I mean, I think, I think the way we track it is pretty good, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're not touching comp time, right?
It's a helpful perk when we're talking to outside candidates, they appreciate.
Absolutely true. I didn't really have anything, I mean, other pressing, those were my big issues.
I don't know if you want to, because we're going to do this again, if you want to spend your own time, you know, you don't have tons of free time, reading through this, because I did give you on, it was April second, if you want to research when that email came through. I gave you a word document to this, if you wanted to make some edits or ask some questions, or just shoot me an email separately.
I mean, I think it's, it's actually really well done, but those were just, and it wasn't, it's just policy things that I had, so. Do you also have the piece for, okay, so you do have the acknowledgement form. Do you also have the piece, do you have the select board handbook? No, you just, this is just the employee one?
This is for all non-union employees.
Right, but do you have, you don't have a copy of the select board one, because we were working on that.
Not, yeah.
You have that, okay.
I can share it.
You mean to compare or something, or?
No, I just wanted to know if that was part of-
You worried about comp time?
Listen here, this, this unpaid position that we all engage in, no, I'm not worried.
We'll pay you out at the end.
Thank you, yeah, right, checks in the mail, yeah.
All right, so what's, what is the plan here? Because, you know, I'm in agreement with everything, except for I am not in agreement with three weeks of vacation for people who just start the first and second year. You know, we have, we're offering three days of personal time, thirteen days of holidays, and then going with fifteen days of vacation. Maybe I'm just a little bit, you know, I think first, first and second year, two weeks vacation is good, but going three weeks vacation between year one and year nine, that, that's just, it's a little much.
We are cutting down the personal days potentially from five to three. It's taking two from there.
We also just put in Juneteenth.
That's a federal holiday, we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
I mean, it's-
Yeah.
I think this is probably where two tiers evolved from, right? Because when you're hiring grade four through six, in fact, there's more, much more of an expectation of getting the three weeks out of the grade, rightly or wrongly, right?
Mm-hmm. Even if it does give the perception that we, you know, highly compensate the top tier and kind of, you know, make people in the lower end of the scale feel less than, less than, let's just say that, right?
Which is, I think, why a lot of towns-
Eliminate it, right, they don't do it by grading because of the potential for that.
All right, so what are we going to do? Are we just going to double-check what you've sent out before, and then just send back further notes, and then get this on the next?
Yep.
Or on a closer agenda?
Yep, next agenda, and it really is-
We're almost there.
I think it's three things, it's the vacation,
Yeah.
Correcting the one to the one-point-five and the accrual of the sick time.
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter, yeah.
Yeah, one-point-two-five.
And the MD note,
Yeah.
Right, within the sick time, and then the personal leave down to three.
And were we good with longevity? Was there any questions? I don't know why I thought there was a question on there at all.
I mean, I thought the amounts were, see if I have notes, pretty consistent with what Mary Ann sent out, but-
Do you know where that is, Mary Ellen, or?
Uh, longevity was page twenty-seven, I just, for some reason, thought somebody had a longevity question.
I don't have notes on the longevity question.
You don't?
No.
Okay. That's pretty modest. And I just want to make sure we're really clear on the difference between regular full-time and regular part-time.
Yeah.
I would, I think, because on the regular part-time employee, it says that an employee-
Which page, Ellen?
Twenty-one. An employee has completed the initial probation period and is regularly scheduled to work at least twenty hours per week on average over the course of an entire calendar year, but less than thirty-four. Because I thought that if you worked more than twenty-
Nineteen and a half, yeah.
If you worked more than twenty, it put you into-
You're benefit-eligible, but you're still part-time.
Right, okay, that's what it is, you're benefit-eligible, okay.
You're fully benefit-eligible, but you're only part-time?
And I, I just, I want to get away from this thirty-six hours a week, I mean, who-
Thirty-four, you mean?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, oh, yeah, that makes my night-
It's the same thing I do.
It's even worse.
Yeah, you do that all.
You say thirty-six.
I say thirty-six all the time, and she has to correct me, it's thirty-four.
So you want it to be thirty-six? What are you saying?
I'd like it to be forty. So.
Do you want to pay them for forty?
And then I do three weeks vacation.
Yeah, Daniel.
No, I just, I think we should just start looking at that.
I think the only other thing that I just picked up on is a vacation carryover that would change, because I think-
What street is, what number do I go?
You know, just, if you don't mind holding for a second, let's pause for a second with what Mary Ellen's saying.
Yep.
What, what about the thirty-four hours? Is that extremely standard municipal-wise, or?
Yes, so the, the ones that I compared us to, Marblehead was a thirty-seven-point-five, Hall was thirty-three, Ipswich was thirty-five, Lynnfield was thirty-seven, Newport, Newburyport was thirty-five, and Situate was thirty-five.
Everybody's different, because everybody, some people are closing on Fridays, some people are working till July.
Some do an hour break, some do a half-hour break, so.
That's what the contract says.
We're probably the least, right? Thirty-four is probably the less, the least.
Right, what?
We're-
Thirty-four is probably one of the lower ones, right? Thirty-three, thirty-four.
Mine says forty, so I don't know what to tell you.
So, do, like, all the department contracts say forty?
No.
Thirty-four.
They don't.
Thirty-four, too?
This one.
Some of them say, some of them don't say.
Right.
His says twenty-four.
You know, standard town hall hours, technically.
It does right now.
Although our town hall hours are more than thirty-four, because we're open on Fridays now.
So we're inconsistent.
We added four hours.
Well, no, but we didn't change-
Not people.
Right.
People still work in-
We added four hours of operating business.
Right.
So it can't be the all standard town hall hours, or something, yeah.
But that's what they say right now, still.
I, I mean, what?
How do you start fixing that, right? We really-
Thirty-five?
Well, if you have new, if we're hiring, you know, as we're hiring new people, you know, welcome to Swamp Scott.
Don't forget to lock the door on your way out.
I don't remember what it is.
Yeah. Well, welcome.
I mean, you balance it with, like, are your needs of your constituents being met? Are your services being met by the hours that you're there, right? What, what are we looking to do? Increase people's hours just to say, we're increasing your hours, and then are we going to compensate them for that? Are we going to adjust the pay scale by that?
Well, I think when we're, when we're hiring, when we're hiring new people, we're hiring at a competitive pay scale, right? And I think we could increase to thirty-six hours without blinking an eye.
But there's a cost associated.
Three weeks vacation, you know?
Eighty-five hundred dollar buyback on sick time?
Mm-hmm.
Longevity.
It's actually not, it does kind of go hand-in-hand in a way.
There's a cost associated, though, right? I mean, you realize.
Maybe not, I mean, thirty-six hours and three weeks vacation, right off the bat.
Yeah, but if you have, but how does it work with the contracts that you have today?
Well, this is going forward.
Only going forward.
Understood, but you would have, you would still have-
You're sitting next to somebody who's working less now, right?
Thirty-four, yeah.
Where's the equity piece, right?
I've been asked.
I will say, for the most part, from where I sit, most people don't dash out the door on time, and a lot of them don't put in for flex or comp time when they're there, an extra hour or more. I really, for the mass majority-
So what is that?
Don't see an abuse of people all, work clock, I gotta go.
Running out of thirty-four hours, you're saying?
They're working more than thirty-four.
Yeah.
And they're not always asking for flex or comp. From town hall's perspective, I can't speak.
So, you know, picture it, you have a brand-new person comes in, you're working an extra couple of hours, the person that's been here twenty years sitting next to you is working less, maybe doing less, right? Where, you know, how does that, what is that, what are you doing for morale there, right? How do you keep them not being, looking at each other and saying, oh, you know? The equity piece, I don't know.
Well, that person tells they've been there a long time, they get more weeks vacation, too, you know? I mean, that's, that's right in the policy.
So you're working less hours than me, and you're getting more vacation than me? Whoa.
That's what, that's what being there, you know, needs to.
And you could not take the job, I mean, I think-
Exactly. We want to get in that position.
Or you, I don't know, look at upping it to thirty-six and looking at people's salaries at the same time.
Right.
Well, that's if we go backwards. You know, going forwards, I think we're, we are competitive. I mean, I think that, you know, we're competitive with other communities, and we're-
Depends on the job.
Yeah, it does, but, right now, according to the gentleman who's doing the search firm, told us our salaries were all over the board, and they're not competitive for some jobs, and other jobs are a little too high.
Well, we've seen that, we've seen that in every salary survey we've done. It's a bigger, big consideration.
All right, so-
Okay, so I think we need to think about that, I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want to vote on that without Katie having the opportunity to vote on that with us. So, we can, I think we've got the data.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you for all of this.
I'll make the changes and send you a changed version in Word.
If you want to up the hours and have us vote on that, you know, we'll leave it up to you, to your professional judgment to make that initial recommendation, then we can blame it on you. Everyone good with that for now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Sorry, Patrick.
Water and sewer rates.
Hello, Patrick. You're a lucky man.
Diane, do you want to pull up?
Diane, do you want to pull up? Thank you. Diane's going to pull up a couple of slides I have. Just got an update on the water sewer rates. I think I last sent the board an update early June, and since then, obviously, we've reached the end of the fiscal year. So I've taken a look at the revenues and expenditures for FY twenty-five to see where we're looking at and project out where retained earnings will be when they're next certified in the fall. Just the highlights, and I've put this in my memo for you, but I'll just orally say it for the, for the meeting. Sewer revenues came in above budget by about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, which is a positive. I would attribute, oh, okay, that's okay. I'll just talk. I would attribute that to the aggressive way that we set the rates last year for the sewer fund particularly. We did pass an almost eighteen percent increase in the rate. And we factored in some buffer for debt service that we thought we may need to pay for our project that was coming online, and that debt service payment, the timing of it was later. So we benefited from not having to pay that in FY twenty-five in its entirety. And in the water fund, the revenues were a little bit below target, about two-and-a-half percent below target. The water rate, we increased six-point-two percent last year. And I would attribute that primarily to a bit of a slip with delinquencies on repayment of the water bills and the sewer bills. So I noticed about a ten percent delinquency rate where we're getting tardiness in the repayments. It's higher than it has been in the past. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. But the water expenditures are right on target, so we're spending almost every dollar that we budgeted in the water fund. So in, in my memo, I put a table in there that shows the projected retained earnings that'll be certified in the fall, which is the FY twenty-six projection column, if you have that memo in front of you. And we're looking at fourteen percent of budget in the sewer fund, which is not twenty percent, which is the threshold that we want to be at in our policies. I think with the rates that we set last year, we were targeting getting us to seventeen percent in year one, so that we would get to twenty percent the following year. But we're moving definitely in the right direction in the sewer fund. In the water fund, we're going to be at six percent. Definitely not moving in the right direction there. We were at eight-point-nine percent last year. The budget is growing, but obviously, our expenditures and our revenues, we didn't have a big surplus this year at all. So using those numbers as the basis to update the rate projections, I have come up with rate projections. Diane, if you want to just flip the slide there. This is the same slide I presented to you last time. I've just updated it with this information. So just to remind you, scenario one gets us to our full funding of retained earnings by the end of this current fiscal year, FY twenty-six. That would be about a twenty-eight percent average bill increase compared to fifty-six communities that are surveyed by the MWRA. We'd be about twelfth for cost of water and sewer service. And it would add on annual basis estimated three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars a year. And then I've updated scenarios two and three, which get you to a lower replenishment of retained earnings in both funds as well, just as additional options. And again, the big thing driving this compared to when we last spoke and I updated you is just the year-end results. So we have more certainty around where the retained earnings will be when the DOR certifies them. I'm very confident in those numbers as the basis for this projection. And then also changing the assumption for collections, the collection rate, lowering that in the model is driving some of these rate increases. And I think to address the increase in repayment, delinquencies, it's definitely a couple of tools we can discuss. I'll have, definitely meet with Gino to see what we can do. But currently, we're not issuing late notices with demand fees for the utility bills, because we have never had to in the past, and there's a cost associated with that, postage and printing. But that may be something that we look to initiate, and that requires town meeting to set a fee for that. But we do that for real estate once a year. I think to do it for water and sewer makes a lot of sense for seeing a slip-up. And we also don't have a shut-off policy. That's never been needed, but there may be a threshold or a situation where we start to look at implementing something like that in really, really drastic situations for accounts. And I don't have a lot of data on other towns. I know other towns on the North Shore have that kind of policy to protect from, you know, just total disregard.
So we have no policy regarding late payments of water and sewer bills?
Well, we do have procedures to collect, so right now, if a water account goes unpaid for fiscal, say, twenty-five, you haven't paid your water bills for FY twenty-five or even one bill. By the time we set the tax rate in December this year, we'll certify your water bill balance to your tax bill as a special assessment, and it gets, becomes part of your tax bill, and we collect that in the third and fourth quarter in the January first bill and the April first bill. And that's standard. That's best general law collection procedures.
There's no penalty?
Well, there's interest at fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent.
Which is definitely punitive, and that's set by the state. But that doesn't seem to be-
Deterring anybody.
Deterring, and then when you certify to a tax bill, if someone then pays their tax bill late, the collection time is prolonged. But if you're sending a late notice, that's another chance for someone to say, "Hey, I missed a payment," and then talk to us. We'll resolve that with you. Yeah.
So Patrick, is the, is the reason that these, that these proposed rates increasing twenty-eight-eight to twenty-four-two in these various scenarios, is this simply a cash flow issue?
Yeah.
Because, because we're now seeing, we're now seeing collection rates at ninety percent when historically they've been-
Partially, because the basis of the scenarios is retained earnings projections. And retained, the basis of the calculation for the retained earnings projection that the DOR does is the cash balance in the fund, and then you back out your liabilities, which are purchase orders you have outstanding at the end of the year for contracts or expenses that will be invoiced later, or any other liability that the DOR identifies. So in a way, yes, to answer your question, that, that's a contributing factor here.
Okay. So in the event that, I mean, historically, where have these assumptions been for the, from a modeling perspective? Have we, have we typically collected ninety-five plus?
Yeah, I'd say typically, if you go back five, ten years, ninety-six, I think we were using ninety-six-point-seven percent. It's been very recently that that's, we've seen a slip. So I've updated this to ninety percent in the model this year. So it, it may be aggressive, you know, especially if we implement policies mid, mid-year. We may hopefully exceed that collection threshold at the end of FY twenty-six, and then we'll have an even larger surplus, and then we'd be looking at a situation where we're in a better position and we can adjust the rate at that time. I don't think we're going to go backward. I think now we have opportunities to implement more policies and try to increase.
So is the ninety, is the ninety, the rate which just happened this year?
Yep.
It is ni, it was ninety?
Yep. Yep.
You didn't just pick that as a conservative, that actually-
No, I mean, it's, it's rounded a little, but yes, ninety percent is what we would, what I would expect at this point as a useful tool.
So, and just on these rate options on the, on the chart that you have in front of us, you would, you would also, I'm going off of memory here, but I do think that you had, you had the combined cost of twelve out of fifty-six communities. But I think you all, I think in previous iterations of this presentation, you, you did have where we ranked on a water perspective solely and then on a sewer perspective. So I'm, I'm just curious as to, as to how that shakes out, because I, I do know that, you know, sewer was certainly something that was, you know, we, we were, we had negative retained earnings for fiscal year twenty-five, and we were trying to get back to that twenty percent threshold as quickly as possible. So I was just curious if, if sewer was, I, I thought historically that had been something that was kept well below.
Yes, you're right. So I had a nice chart in the slides, and I can recirculate it for you. I don't have it updated tonight, but I do have it updated to share with you. I just didn't include it in what I gave Diane. So our water rates are high compared to these other communities that are included in the survey. And with this change, we would be probably third out of fifty-six for water rates. I think in the last iteration, we were maybe like sixth. So we're right up there with Ahant, actually is quite high, and Winthrop. And then for sewer rates, you're correct, we were below the, the middle mark, the middle of the pack. This would bring us a little bit above the middle of the pack with the sewer increase.
Yeah, but also at a time when we've chronically under-invested in our, in our infrastructure, in our wa, in our sewer infrastructure.
Yes.
I, I know we've invested in our, in our water infrastructure. But, you know, all these things, you need to, yeah, you need to, you need to pay to, to play. And certainly those repairs that we're making and those investments that we're making in hundred-plus-year-old infrastructure needs to be, you know?
Yeah, I would say we're playing a little bit of catch-up with the infrastructure, and we're also, same time, playing catch-up with the rate, so.
Yeah, I, I say, I am, I am concerned about, you know, what the, the likely tax rate is going to be based on the budget to begin with, right? And then this on top of it, and then our next topic.
CPA.
CPA on top of that.
Yep.
So, you know, we do have investments to make, but we also have, you know, we have other sources that we have, the ARPIT funds, we have the low-cost loans that we're using to do a lot of the sewer work, right? So it's not like we don't have, this isn't our primary, even our primary source, I don't think, in terms of funding those long-term investments, which are, you know, they're long-term investments. As opposed to, you know, what we're doing here is, I think of that this more as our, kind of, this is our operating costs, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, while it'd be nice to get to twenty percent, I, I'm not sure if there's like total magic in that, you know, in one year. So it's not a huge delta, and we're looking at the difference between three-hundred-and-fifty-eight versus three-hundred dollars for the average household. But I'll just say, I, I'm inclined to, to go lower with this at this point in time. I realize that we're probably not going to get to twenty percent magically if we do that, but to take it more stepwise as opposed to trying to solve this all at once, but, you know.
I'll just-
Happy to hear the counter to that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. You know, I, I have worked with a subgroup from the Water Sewer Infrastructure Committee on this. They haven't seen this most recent update, because I just did this, like, this past week. And obviously, they've had a little bit of turnover with their committee. But I did meet with them in June, and they said, you know, generally, the sense of their, their committee as a whole was that they favored a scenario where that these retained earnings were fully replenished in one year. So that was their communication to me, so I want to make sure you have that. And I totally appreciate that the holistically, you know, the cost, the affordability of, you know, owning a property or living in Swamp Scott or anywhere in Massachusetts really is, is tough. There's a lot of pressures on that right now. The water and sewer funds are separate from the general fund, and I know the money comes from the same place, which is everybody. But, you know, this is an area of really risk at this point, where we know we have, there's all these investments that need to be made, and we know that our funds are in a, you know, they're not in this sky-high position where we can throw money at all, we don't have cash on hand to throw at all those projects. So I don't know if you want to flip to the next slide, Diane. So one of the things I gave you last time I met you and I updated it is a ten-year forecast for rate increases. On the back end of this, and I have the backup, I think it's in your packet somewhere. You know, I have a whole ten-year forecast for water and sewer funds that factors in the capital investments we know about. This chart shows, you know, if, using scenario one, you know, the large increase in FY twenty-six, and then you get more manageable increases over the next ten years using realistic numbers. You're not going to see a two percent on there. I leveled it out at, you know, we're not going to do less than a three percent. And that gets you the lines that are horizontally, you know, increasing vertically across the horizon there. Those are your retained earnings balances in the funds, assuming you're not pulling anything out. So they're just steadily increasing, and then that's, that's cash on hand you can use for those projects. Or if you say, "Hey, that's not the route we want to go. We have another funding mechanism." That's a year you can raise your rate less. Or like, I know in Ahant had a situation where they had a huge expenditure, a huge, huge rate increase, and then the following year, they dropped the rate like seven percent or something, because they were generating these surpluses and they, my assumption is they made a policy decision, we don't need that level surplus in the out-years. So there's different things that can be decided, obviously, over the ten-year horizon, but lots will change. But this is what, what you could get out of this, or any of three of these scenarios, I think would get you some version of this here, which is the direction we want to be going in. This is not the direction we have been going in the last, you know, ten years looking back. So that's, that's the gist for that side.
Yeah, just, just two, two comments. I mean, I, I think a lot of this is going to be driven by the assumption, the collection rate assumption. So if historically we were at ninety-six-point-seven, and now we're changing this assumption to ninety, you know, maybe we do want to take a closer look at what, at what that assumption is, because that is going to have a big impact on this, on this discussion about rate increases. So.
Although, I mean, I think Patrick's saying, I mean, that was what happened in the most recent year, so he has looked at that. So I think we have to kind of, you know, it seems reasonable.
I think we're in a position with, with these funds and these rates that we need to be conservative.
Yeah.
We need to hedge our bets with that.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, a year from now, when we're having this conversation again, hopefully, we're, we're able to implement some changes mid-stream that these, the collection rate is up, and then the rates can come-
The rates can moderate.
You know what I mean? But we're really, we're trying to target the balance in the fund at a certain level so that we comply with our own policies, so.
The, the collection rate is a cash flow issue, but because it's a cash flow issue, it messes up your formula, right?
It reduces your retained earnings if you, if, yes.
It reduces your retained earnings, because you don't have the cash in there, but you still have, it, it's still an asset.
You still have a receipt.
It's actually an asset plus fourteen percent.
Right.
So. One way of me saying I'm not-
These are huge incre, I'm sorry, I just have, these are massive increases.
Right. I can't, I can't get on, on board with these increases at all.
Yeah, I just, I also have one question. It, with the liability on the project that's cleared, the one-seventy-four, is that, are we talking about the money that was spent, spent, I thought it was like one-eighty-five on Stacy's Brook? We spent, we, we spent a hundred and something thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on Stacy's Brook, and we put it into our sewer fund. Did we take that out?
No, this is-
That's still in there?
This is, that, I, whatever that is, that's different than what I'm talking about here.
Okay.
So, yeah, I know this was addressed in previous meetings where there was a timing issue with the capital project, where an expense came on sooner than expected. The borrowing didn't happen by June thirty, so that-
Oh, okay, so you're talking about, because there's a-
retained earnings on the balance sheet.
You were talking about, because we heard a ton of information about how we were in the negatives, and we were really never in the negatives.
Right.
Okay. That was just-
That's what that is.
Campaign.
Okay. And, let's see.
David has a question.
Just, go ahead.
No, just, just one other, one other comment was, was really, some residents had reached out, understanding that water and sewer rates were, were likely going to go up double-digit percentages.
Yep.
And they had brought to me something, you know, something that's done in other communities, Revere was one of the examples. So May fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Mayor Keith announced this week that applications for elderly and disabled residents' tax relief program and water sewer relief for disabled residents will be available in the Treasurer's Office on City Hall. On the website, this is sustained by voluntary contributions from taxpayers who respond to the donation sheet included in each quarterly tax bill. Purpose of the program is to provide relief to elderly and/or disabled taxpayers, ratepayers, who are having trouble paying their water and sewer bills because of hardship, et cetera. There's, there's a requirement, criteria. Is this something that we may be able to look to, to implement to help those who are mostly?
We can. If, Diane, if you want to click to my next slide, we do have some version of this. So there's a program in place where qualifying residents can get their base rate waived on their water and sewer bills. If they're seventy-five or older and they're using below a certain threshold of water in a year, they can fill out a form and submit it to the DPW Business Office and get that base rate waived, which would be, you know, under any of these scenarios, it'd be about a hundred and seventy dollars a year. So that's available. That's based on age.
So is that the only qualifier? They have to be using less than three thousand?
Yep, it's use and age.
Use and age? So no income required?
There's no income requirement on that. If the board wanted to implement some other version that would make more relief available to, or different relief available to different classes that may qualify, that's something that I believe is within your power as water and sewer commissioners.
What is Revere's there, is it?
Yeah, it, it, it's just saying the program's funded by the generosity of Revere residents, looking to extend a helping hand to those in need. It's aimed at helping senior citizens and financially vulnerable individuals.
Okay.
It will provide some welcome relief. I can circulate this.
So that, that's an instance where taxpayers or ratepayers are funding that-
Yeah.
Through like a check-off on the tax bill, or the water bill, rather.
Yeah.
That's something we can look into. I, I'm aware of that. I think that might require an action of town meeting to put a check-off on a bill like that.
Okay. I, I think it would be worth just the investigation.
Yeah, if we know the-
From my, from my perspective as, as one-
Yeah, I can find other examples and see what it would take to implement something like that and report back. I can talk to Gino. Okay. Thanks, Patrick.
What's, I don't necessarily, are you looking for a vote tonight, timing-wise? We're, we're, I don't want to- I'm looking to push it off, but like-
August fifteenth, yep.
Yeah, we start reading August first, yeah, and bill August fifteenth, yep.
Bill August fifteenth, so we'll, we'll need, we would want some kind of decision on rates. Yeah, exactly. Yep, and if there's any feedback, any changes you want me to run, I'm happy to do all of it. I just- I'm happy to do all of it. I just need to know what, what you're interested in seeing as a board.
So what we're saying is if we vote on number three, the additional amount to the average household will be another three hundred dollars.
Estimated. Yep.
That's on top. What do we, what do we project in terms of the taxes? Seven, eight hundred?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. To the average. And then, what's the CPA?
Hundred bucks.
Eleven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep.
Divided by four, roughly three hundred dollars a quarter.
I just think this, this increase is exorbitant. I really do.
Part of the problem-
Even option three.
Right. I know, but part of the problem is the recommendations we're making previously-
Were exceptionally low. Right.
And they were being shot down as political suicide.
You know, I'll be honest with you. Anytime that something has been presented to us, I mean, the presentations that we had, they were never really that high. I mean, we, I don't, I don't know. I think, um-
What do you mean there, Mary Ellen?
The, the past presentations that we've had, I think-
This coming year or past years?
For the last few years.
Okay.
Actually, even longer than that.
Okay.
They, I, I never looked at it like it was political suicide. I looked at it like we, it was a recommendation. You could go this, this, and this.
They were getting chopped down before they got to see you, before you got to see the rates.
Oh, they got chopped down even further before we got them?
Oh.
Okay. So does that mean we weren't being told the whole story? Mm-hmm. Okay. So that puts another twist to it.
But there were, there were, I think, last year, rate recommendations somewhere in the, in the high single digits. And I think we, I, I think we chose-
We voted for-
We did.
We, I don't think we chose, I don't think we chose the highest. I think we chose something that was, that was a little more moderate.
We definitely didn't choose a little bit.
Yeah, we had two options, like twenty and nineteen or something like last year.
Yeah, I have it. So I believe the water rate was six percent and the sewer rate went up eighteen point two. On a combined basis, that's probably like twelve.
Oh, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the, the target of, for the retained earnings.
Yeah, I think we did, we did seventeen, and obviously, we haven't met that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So what we voted last year, we were, we were hoping we were going to get to seventeen on both water and sewer out of that?
Yep. That was the goal.
And we got to six and-
And fourteen. Yep.
So are we being too aggressive with the retained earnings?
Right.
With the target there?
Right.
Are we being too aggressive with retained earnings, especially if we do have, if we do have good stabilization funds?
That's really, so the policy that exists is twenty percent, right? So-
Right. But is that policy, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. Why?
Right. It always comes back to that same thing.
That's, that's the policy that we have as a town. So that's kind of the direction I've been told to take. So I've, I've prepared that. But if we want to go in a different direction, see, base the target off a different retained earnings percentage, or throw that whole thing away and base it on some other metric, I can do that. Just be looking for a little direction there.
No, absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you have any sense of other towns, whether they have similar policies?
The financial policy, that was, there was research done at the time that was prepared. So there were definitely peers and comps. That hasn't been revisited. That's on the docket for us to do this year is to go through those policies and update them. That hasn't been done.
How often have you had to go into retained earnings?
Um, the, so the last couple of years, I don't think town meeting has appropriated retained earnings to reduce the rate. But obviously, that was being done regularly. Like, you know, if you go back three, four, five, six years, every year, that was being done.
So let me understand. So the past three, four, five years, we were tapping into retained earnings because the, the rates were set so intentionally low. Is that in my-
So what, what it was is, we were, we had our policy of retained earnings was here, and we were bringing in so much more over the retained earnings. So we just, we had to take them, we just used that money to go back into it.
Rather than raise rates.
Rather than-
Now we're in the opposite situation. And-
So it was easier to do that as opposed to the perception of raising rates, I would assume. Right?
Right. So the, the question is, we have a policy of twenty percent, twenty percent. But what I want to know is, do we really need to have twenty percent? The retained earnings is there as a safety mechanism. And how often have we had to hit, go into that safety mechanism? Can we drop retained earnings down to fifteen percent?
Right.
Right. You, you can make that choice, I think, on a holistic level. You know, when I look at the water and sewer funds, there's a lot that can go wrong in operations that would require a big L.A. on a short notice to prepare critical infrastructure. So you do need some, some level of buffer there. And I look at, you know, on the combined financial statements, when we're looking at our bond rating, they look at what resources we have to repay debt. And the water and sewer debt is unique, where it's dedicated to be repaid from rates and from these funds. So they're looking at, you know, what dedicated resources do you have piled up to service the debt that you're taking on for your funds. And then you may not need that level of qualification to get an SRF loan from the state. But if you're going out to market, that, they're going to look at that. So I think twenty percent, like, I think that's reasonable from that viewpoint, my opinion. But-
So if we were to ask you, before we take this vote, again, we'd love to have Katie help take this with us.
Sure. Yeah.
In two weeks, would you be able to come back and say, oh, here's a few other communities right around us or whatever that, you know, they're, they're also at twenty percent or they're at fifteen percent?
What their policies are. Yeah, I could take a look, and I could definitely pull at least five. So we, we have a basis.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I think a little bit to what Mary Ellen's saying. I would feel less bad about this if I felt like there's kind of a gun to my head to say, well, I hate it, but-
Right.
We really have to do this.
Right.
But even, even any of these options, you know?
Yeah.
And could you do the, an option, assuming we lowered it to fifteen percent or lowered the retained earnings projection? Would you do an analysis of what that would look like also?
I could if I had a little bit of runway. Yeah, yeah. We can.
Because in the worst-case scenario, what if you do decide to go at fifteen percent retained earnings? The next year, if you find that you're, it's not working, or you, you know, it's not enough, then you can turn around and change that. But what, what's the harm in attempting it, right?
Right.
Right. There's not much analysis. Yeah, I mean, that's option three, basically.
Well, we just, we, we, it's, you know, there's a risk and reward here. We have to make sure that on the retained earnings, that we do think about what could possibly happen, what has happened over the last five and ten years. And then you also have to look at your calculations. I mean, have you also calculated for the application of SRF loans for this August? We are applying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I factored into the ten-year horizon. I factored in what we know we're taking on for our capital and the funding mechanism. So if it's SRF-
What did you, what did you use for rates on that?
The SRF loan, it would have been-
Did you use the SRF loan rates?
Yeah, it would have been the two or the two point six. And then we have other projects that we can't use that program for.
Right. Okay.
So that would be water meter replacements. That's a three million dollar project plus.
Uh-huh.
We couldn't get an SRF loan for, so we'd either be borrowing or whatnot.
We keep kicking that can down the road, don't we?
Yeah, yeah. But that can't get kicked much farther, I don't think so.
We only have like another two years left on that.
Yeah. So stuff like that, I use market, you know, current market rate.
Yep.
That's subject to change.
Okay.
I mean, we can, you can kind of do the math here, right? If you, you were trying to just get to fifteen percent instead of twenty, you're going to have a couple hundred thousand dollars less, less in each account, right?
Yeah.
So if something comes along-
And you have to remember, it's about, I think, for me, this, there's a lot about cash flow in this. It's not about not having the asset. It's just the cash flow.
It's a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar difference in each account. Well, just, I, I'm sorry. I was just looking at the water. But yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's, it's another two hundred grand.
It's something. Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think-
It'll be the difference between what we need and what we don't have.
Right. Yeah. And I'll just chime in too. We're looking at the rate increases under the current structure of the, you know, we have different tiers for different levels of use. And we did a whole analysis for that. That took like two years. I think going forward, when we're looking at our true cost of water and sewer and seeing it rise to probably where it should be, we need to look at the rate structure and the tiering and see, you know, all these other communities I look at, are you doing much more complex tiering systems? They have five, seven tiers. They break it out based by meter size. They break it out based on commercial, industrial, residential. So you can get a lot deeper with that. I don't think that that's something that we can handle just internally. I think we would need a consultant. And there are consultants out there that do that for towns to do a rate study. I don't think that's been done in Swampscott formally, like by outside consultant in a long time. And I don't like to recommend that because I know that costs money. But we may, may get to a point very soon where we want to do that because maybe there's a way to equalize, you know, the, the burden of the water and sewer.
Why can't we just charge, why can't we eliminate a base rate period and just charge for water? Because that would equalize everybody. Is it, is it a mass general law that we have to have a base rate?
I believe it is part of our requirements through the MWRA. That's, that's what came up.
Let me find, let's find that out. Because, you know, when, when we're talking about some of the larger apartment complexes, wanting to charge more over there because they only have, I think, one base rate or just a base rate per building, that was the reason why we had made some changes. But, you know, you have a lot of, one, you know, single people that live in there, a lot of retired people that live in there that aren't really using too much water. And then my fear is always putting the burden, putting a higher burden on them, just because they live, just because they live over-
And that's-
And there's one master meter. Right. And that's, that's something I really want to make sure we're looking at so that they are not charged, they're not carrying a bigger burden. I'd rather see-
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather see a higher rate on, you know, the irrigation systems and the pools and things like that, things that are not necessities, but more luxuries.
We can get way deeper in the weeds on who, who picks up what. If, if we do like a formal rate study, we can go way deeper than, like, I can go fairly deep with this because I've been looking at it for a while. But we can go a whole nother level if we have the resources to analyze all that data from the accounts.
But we're not doing that this year.
No.
We don't have to do that.
Not going to be doing that for a few years.
No.
Yeah, no, but we-
But, and to your point with the base rate, I mean, if you eliminate a base rate, that's revenue you can count on because your number of accounts generally stays stable or increases.
Mm-huh.
And it's based on the number of accounts, and it's assessed on that only. Versus if you shift everything into consumption, you're adding another degree of fluctuation depending on how people use or don't use water. It's just another comment.
Okay. So what's the plan?
So before I get a really bad reputation for facilitating a meeting-
You're already there. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think we need just a little bit more information, primarily about, from my perspective, the policy, about the twenty percent. Anything else in particular for next week or two weeks from now that Patrick needs to bring forward?
I mean, we'll just talk about the policy, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think, I think looking at the, looking at an elderly and disabled tax relief program, water bill relief program, and how City of Revere and maybe other neighboring communities on the North Shore are handling this, I think would be, would be interesting. And if we need to know, you know, if, if we need town meeting approval to add something to a, to a water sewer bill, let's find that out from KP.
Sure. Yeah. So I, I think the big explanation is why do we have to be at twenty percent?
It's just a policy. That's all.
Yeah, but it's also, it's also there for-
It's more than the policy, right? It's the, it's the expected expenditures, really.
I think to have a policy and to meet your policy is important. But I think it's a fair question to say, is our policy in line with what it should be? Could it be less? Should it be more? I don't know. So that's what I'll answer for you.
Great.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay.
To be continued.
CPA.
Moving on.
Okay.
CPA.
Okay. This will be really quick, I promise. Sorry, I went on and on.
It's your comp time.
So really quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Community Preservation Act surcharge has come online for FY twenty-six. So that's included in tax bills starting now. I have a slide with the, how it's calculated on the screen, and that includes the hundred thousand dollar automatic exemption. So this is a one point five percent surcharge on the property tax that you are assessed. So your actual tax assessment for the year, you're charged one point five percent on that. You get an exemption of a hundred thousand dollars of value. And the calculation is there. So there will be a means-tested exemption that's also available to taxpayers that they can apply for through the Board of Assessors. The applications will be accepted January first, just like all other tax exemption and abatement applications are. So after you get your actual tax bill with the new tax rate, you'll be able to fill out a form and provide some income information. And if you qualify, you'll be able to get the CPA surcharge waived for that particular tax year. You would have to apply for that each year. And the form will be available in the customer service office at Town Hall with the assessors, and we'll put it on the website. And we'll probably put it, make it available at the senior center too. And we'll inform Heidi how to, you know, explain that to, to folks, her and her staff. I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. And the only other thing I want to add is that we build out approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the CPA surcharge, and that's for the first half of the year.
So when was the, when's the first time people will see this on their tax bills?
It's, it's, it's in, in your preliminary tax assessment now. And then you'll see it on the actual tax bill. It'll be broken out. You'll see the actual assessment for the year.
So people have them now?
Yep. It's in the, it's in there now.
Mm-hmm. And then maybe, why, why just the three seventy-five? You say three seventy-five, and it'll be seven fifty?
Yeah. So that's, so we do a, assessors do a preliminary tax assessment. That's your first and second quarter tax bills. That's based on last year's tax. It's half of last year's tax. So you're getting, that's, so we build out first and se- we have calculated out first and second quarter. So the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what we're getting on the CPA surcharge from first and second quarter bills. So we would anticipate for the full year, you'd get double that.
Yeah.
Less any exemptions that are applied.
Okay.
And that's really all I have. I'm not going to talk about the committee. I don't know if we need to do that tonight, but-
Well, just to make it really, just to make it really clear for everybody who's still watching. So if somebody has a ten thousand dollar tax bill, what, what is this going to look like for them?
So if you have a ten thousand dollar tax bill, you're getting an exemption on your first hundred thousand dollars of your property's value. So at the current tax rate, that's about, you know, a hundred and fourteen dollars. That's, I'm sorry, eleven hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's late. That's exempted. So you take a ten thousand dollar tax bill, you can back out eleven forty-seven, and that's your, you know, estimated CPA surcharge for the year. And then that's, gets paid quarterly through your tax bill.
I think it's hard to say when you start with the tax bill amount.
I should have started with the assessed value.
I, I mean, the calculation.
Right here.
I already have it.
Yeah.
So I can put that, I don't know if that's helpful to put on the website. I can do that.
Can you please put that on the website?
Yep.
I think it's close to that, actually. Ten thousand's probably close to that.
Yeah. Just as long as it's on the website, people can-
Yeah. I think, I think I put this up in the collector's office too. So if people come in and have questions, we can point to it type of thing.
Isn't there a link to communitypreservation.org that actually has the calculation?
It's just me?
No, it's driving me crazy. It's over here now. There you go, David.
It's a little fly-in infestation. Yes, there definitely is a lot of information.
So there's a lot of information, but is there a calculator so residents could go on and potentially get it?
I, I would bet there is, but I'm not sure.
I thought there is. But i- if I can locate it, I'll-
Yeah, if you find it, send it to me. Because that would be useful too. If people are curious, they can just plug it in at home.
Yep.
That's great.
Try to make it easier.
Although they, it's going to be on their tax bill. So they're going to know what it is.
Yep. They can call us and talk about it. That's fine.
It's now ten o'clock.
Okay, but we do need to, on the committee side, uh, we're going to take the pain. We might as well start planning for the good part of it as well. So, Diane, where do we stand? Uh, we issued kind of a notice to all the relevant committees.
Yep.
To, we giving them a deadline or anything in terms of when they're supposed to get it back to us with their?
July or August.
Okay.
Because not all of them need, like, had a couple of Saturday out meeting again, so probably in August, maybe probably September, we should know.
Yeah, let's try to, yeah, get them back by the end of August.
Okay. And we just got it up on the website. It's in the description and everything.
Yes, thank you.
And then I'll advertise by just having that time, but I'll, I'll, a notice for residents, for people to start applying.
Mm-hmm. For the one that we.
For the one resident, that's correct.
That we nominate.
Yep.
Okay.
Should be good.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, uh, so consent agenda, we have a long consent agenda tonight, uh, that I believe we can do all in one motion part of the consent agenda, and that's because we basically have to revote everything we did at the last meeting, because, uh, Mary Ellen was on the video and.
Had to be a rope. The car.
The car, whatever, yep. Um, so we weren't in person, so we had to, uh, we have to redo these.
All right, motion to approve.
Can we just, hold on a second. Can we just remove the minutes? We have the minutes in here, right? Just remove the minutes. If you could just boot the minutes to the next meeting.
Yep.
That's fine. Motion to approve the consent agenda sans minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, select board time.
Okay, yep, so I had a whole list of things and I forgot them all now, but, um, thank you to, to Nancy Schultz for letting us be part of the reading on July third. It was a very, very nice ceremony.
Yes.
Um, that was really well done. Kelly Khatib, Nancy Schultz, and Margaret Solmer coordinated that, and Ralph Edwards also. Um, special congratulations to Danielle Strauss, who is retiring tomorrow or the next day.
Next day.
After twenty years.
This Thursday.
This Thir, Thursday.
July tenth. Oh, okay.
And, uh, big thanks to her and what she's accomplished over the past twenty years. She certainly solidified her place in Swampscott history. She, uh, the sheer number of recreation events that are on the calendar for the summer alone is, is off the charts, and they, they did a beautiful job with the Fourth of July. So big congratulations to her and Jackie Camerlingo, who really have done a lot of work over the past couple of months. Fourth of July went well. The races were well attended. Thank you for Anchor Food Pantry, the football team that helped us out. Uh, Mary Ellen and I were there. David was there and, um.
Doug was there. So was Doug.
Doug was there, too, sir. Doug. Did you see him racing?
You were busy. You were busy cheering people on.
Really busy yelling at little kids, yes. Um, yes, so.
Sixty-plus.
It was a nice community event, and, um, I already thanked Gino Crestor and the DPW guys for helping out with this trash scenario, and that's, I think that's all I've got.
And the recreation, uh, events continue this weekend. Bentwater Day at the beach, uh, two to eight, Fisherman's Beach on Saturday. Hopefully the weather, uh, cooperates as it has, uh, in the previous five years. But I'll look forward to seeing everybody out there at the beach for a fun day of music and sun and beers from, uh, Bentwater.
Thank you. Mary Ellen?
I just want to, um, give another shout-out to Gino and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for all your hard work and the guys at DPW. This is not easy times, um, dealing with a trash strike. Um, even though there are benefits, like your tan and things like that, but I, I, I think you could find a tan another way. And the other thing is, I want to, um, thank and just point out that Dr. Arthur Friedman, a local veterinarian, uh, hosted the rabies clinic again. He's, I think it's the seventh rabies clinic that he's done, and he's, um, he's a real gem. He helps a lot of people, and when there are veterans that come up, uh, he doesn't even charge them anything. He, he helps out and he, he actually, um, brings them into his clinic and gives them very special pricing. So he's, he's a great guy, and I really appreciate his help.
Well, I'll second, third, and fourth, uh, all those.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, I was going to try to like tie along with the thank yous and everything, um, uh, to Danielle, uh, to Danielle Strauss, Danielle Leonard, Mary Ellen, uh, the games are a lot of fun. Um, and, you know, Gino and the, the, everybody in Town Hall pulling together, not only the fireworks was amazing, um, with the trash situation, uh, with the beautiful beach days, uh, a lot going on, basically. Um, and really kind of an ideal, you know, seaside town weekend, so, except for the trash not being picked up.
Things I forgot to mention, I don't know when to keep the prolong this meeting, but ironically enough, King's Beach is one of the worst beaches, closed all the time on July third, when all the other beaches predominantly were closed on the Commonwealth, King's Beach was open.
Yeah. Is that because of the UV?
A hundred percent because of the UV.
Well, there's been really impressive numbers.
Talking about burying the lead in the last minute, you want to say, okay, yeah.
I was like seaweed working out.
Seaweed is a lot of maintenance, but.
Able to get it.
We're down there on a regular basis, yep, moving the seaweed.
Oh, one thing I did want to ask you, the showers at Phillips.
Yeah, that's come up quite a bit. So we had to shut the water off because they're both leaking.
Yeah.
There are pots which had to get shipped in, but we're on it and hopefully it'll be on this week. It's both the shower and the footwash.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had issues with those from day one, unfortunately.
Yeah. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.